Okay, good evening to all. Welcome to the December 3, 2013, meeting of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Leonard Stewart. I'm the vice chairman. I'll be running the meeting in the absence of Kathy Hooton, our chairperson. A few remarks by way of introduction. The Goffstown Zoning Board were an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. The board currently has five elected members and four alternates. If anyone is interested in surveying on this board, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting. We tend to follow the items in order. The board will open a public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, butters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at Town Hall in the morning to get the results. For an applicant's request, there must be, to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on the application. And looking around the table, I see, including alternates, we will have a five-member board this evening. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to the Superior Court. If we can go around the table, and I would ask everyone to introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Eaton.
Alan Eaton, alternate.
Kathy Champagne, alternate.
Jay LePreck.
Vivian Blondo.
And I'm Brian Rose, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, moving into our first public hearing for the evening. Whoops. As you can tell, it's been a very long day already. We have a minute submitted for the November 5 meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
May I have a second? Any discussion or corrections? All in favor? All right. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0.
I'm standing.
And Vivian, okay, Carrie's 4-0, Vivian substanding. Okay, the first hearing on our agenda for this evening is one that is continued from the November 5 meeting, where Bel Air Associates, and I will read the notice of the hearing. "Bel Air Associates' applicants' owners are seeking a variance to erect an internally illuminated LED message center sign at Bel Air Nursing Home property to replace their existing signs. The variance is needed because the proposed sign is located as close as 60 feet to the front property line of a budding lots in the Residential 1 district that are across the street, and as close as 90 feet to a lot in the Residential 1 district that abuts this property to the west. Whereas Section 663 requires that internally illuminated signs within 250 feet of a residential R1 or R2 district boundary only be illuminated by shielded external white light. No internal illumination is permitted. The property is located on 29 Center Street, MAP 28, Lot 17, in the Commercial District." With that, is there anyone here who is representing the applicant? Please come forward, have a seat, introduce yourself, and let me hear what you have to say.
My name's Willie Maemon. I'm a lawyer with Craig Deachman Maemon in Manchester.
Could you repeat your name and spelling, please?
Sure thing. Willie, last name's Maemon, M-A-M-A-N-N. And my firm is Craig Deachman Maemon, Manchester, New Hampshire.
Could you speak a little louder?
Sure.
And my name is Robert Lennox, and I'm with Bel Air Associates, currently the operator of the facility.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here Tuesday night. And we were last here in October, we didn't have a full board, and we thought it was important that we have that, we have that here. So, a few housekeeping things, I guess, if I could. The applicant had submitted a sense of the application, and I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to look at that. It's pretty extensive. I have a copy of it here, but does the board have that? I'm not sure if they do. Okay, great. Then no need for me to go through that. I'd be glad to answer any questions. There's a lot of technical points in there that are really probably beyond my comprehension. We start talking about lumens and foot candles and things like that, but it is there and it is helpful. Beyond that, we had a few things that I wanted to submit, probably just two or three things by way of exhibit. And so, if this would be the time to do that, I could circulate that if the board would allow that.
Please do.
Yeah, sure. What we have here, Mr. Lennox is going to circulate, and I actually have some.
Mr. Vice Chairman, with the permission of the board, I have copies, and I don't know if any people here in the audience would be interested in this, or if it's...
Any objections from the board?
What this is, fairly obvious, but SUSE signs put this together. On the left-hand side of the sketch are the existing signs at the property. There are two of them, and the dimensions are there. In the middle is what we have, is what we're seeking, is the proposed sign, again with the dimensions there. I think it's important to note as well that in the proposed sign, the only portion that would be illuminated is that black area. And this is going to be a dark background. This is not going to be a white background, which I think is significant, because if you had a white background, it throws off a lot more light versus a dark background light like this. I'll talk more about the specifics and the technical aspects of the sign later. The important thing is, I think, to look at the sign all the way to the right. That sign under the present code of the town would be allowed. And we think that this is a stunning comparison when you look at this. The sign on the right, obviously, is not internally illuminated, but it would be by code allowed to be illuminated by a single white shielded light. The gist of our presentation is, I think, and I hope you'll agree, is we want to be good neighbors here. We haven't just willy-nilly gone out and tried to get a sign that's just going to increase the business. We want to be good neighbors. We want to have this very narrowly tailored and take into consideration the impacts on the community at large and the neighbors. And so, this was not a sign that was, we'll just say this was, a lot of thought was put into this sign. Some of the features of the sign are that it's dimmable. It also has an automatic dimmable feature, where as it gets brighter, the sign gets less bright as well. I know that the applicant has spent more money towards this sign to have those features, because they think it's important for the community. So, that was the one thing I wanted to distribute. The other, the other I can leave, perhaps, is just the property tax, and I think you probably have that. The second thing I'd like to submit.
I'll wait for people to get it.
This is, as you can see, it's a download from the Internet. And this is the property across the street. And the only reason we're bringing this to the board's attention is that the sign that's hanging there, it looks to me as a Coca-Cola sign, is larger than what we're proposing. It also has internal illumination. That place is not in operation anymore, and it hasn't been for probably two years. But that sign, as you can, if you can make out in the bottom left-hand corner in white, is dated September 2011. Mr. Lennox is here to testify that that sign that's pictured there was there as late as December of 2011. I don't know if it was there beyond that. Again, I think the point there is, this was immediately across the street. It's an internally illuminated sign for a business that apparently was allowed. I'm assuming that the board allowed it, but maybe I'm wrong about that. Again, the point is, our proposed sign is not going to be hanging high up in the sky like that, and it's going to be a lot smaller. So, I think the impact on the neighbors, and that's what we're concerned about, is going to be far less. As far as the points for variance, I think the board's familiar with them, so I don't think I need to go through all of them. But for point of clarity, I think the gist of this is, would what we're proposing alter the characteristics of the neighborhood and the community? And alter it in a bad way, I guess? We don't think so, obviously. We're biased, and we're here. But we're going from two signs down to one. So, we could ask to keep the present two signs. We're not. We're really consolidating this thing. The sign also has on the edges, I don't know if you can make it out in this picture, I think granite columns. People have different tastes, and they are what they are. But I would submit that it's a more aesthetically pleasing sign than what's there now. I mentioned to someone when I was coming here tonight about this, and they said, "Oh, yeah, they have a sign. It's kind of outdated and in front of the place." I said, "Yeah, it is." They're looking to do this to increase their business, increase and better their brand. What they're not looking to do is to tick off their neighbors. You know, I've walked the property. I've been there. I understand there are people here, and I'm sure there's some people that speak for it, some against it. We think that what we're proposing will throw off less light than what spotlight, white spotlights would do. And that's not by accident. When we're talking about the standards for variance, again, I kind of focus on the unnecessary hardship prong, which I'm sure the board is familiar with. We submit that this proposed sign is a reasonable use of the applicant's property, considering the property's unique setting, which New Hampshire courts have discussed in those terms. This is a residential area by and large. We get that, and that's why this isn't right out here and right on Main Street, and this isn't downtown Manchester, that's for sure. And we don't want it to be. We're not trying to turn it into bright lights. People go to bed at a reasonable hour, and they get up, and look, we're a nursing home. I mean, this is not going to be something where they're trying to attract a lot of buzz. One concession that we're willing to make now, and if the board were inclined to approve this with a restriction, would be that the sign shuts off at midnight. As it is now, under the code, they could have that on, they could have the light on all night. We don't see a need for that. So, we think that having the light that's dimmable and that's going to shut off at midnight and maybe come on at 5:00 or 6:00 a.m., again, just so people, morning traffic, can see the sign, is a concession that the applicant is more than happy to make. Doesn't need to, but would like to do that. And we think if there's a neighbor, and they're worried about a bright light shining in their window at 1:00 in the morning, again, we would submit that, under the current code, we could have the white light on all night. And I'm not saying that as a threat. We're trying to do something that will make everyone happy and get the sign through. Some of the features of the sign, too, I think, are, this is not going to be neon, correct?
Correct. It's LED.
It's an LED light, and they're not going to be flashing. I mean, we can get into some of the rates of refreshment on the sign and things of that nature. But again, the whole point here is, we want to be obnoxious neighbors. That doesn't serve anybody's purpose. They're there to perform a service and to be in business and to be there for a long time. The signs that are there now, I think, have been there since 1995, roughly. I think the board's familiar with the history of this business and whole, but they, I think, employ about 53 people there, most of them full-time and some part-time. Nearly all of those employees are Goffstown residents. So, you know, we see this as being a good thing for the town as far as employing people there. We see this as a good thing for the residents, the people that live there. The applicant, you know, the genesis of this is the applicant thinks it will increase and better their business, as they say. It's a tough economic climate. I don't think I need to remind people of that. The tax burden for the applicant has increased, I think, more than $7,000 from the year before last. And so, we're not complaining about paying taxes. Everyone has to do that, and we understand that. But they're merely wanting to continue an operation and do it in the most cost-effective and least offensive manner. So, I guess on the contrary to public interest prong, we have traffic studies that are part of the initial application that we submitted. There's no evidence at all that suggests that installing this type of sign would increase traffic accidents. In fact, there's evidence that would be the opposite, that it wouldn't be. I think if you just drive around New Hampshire nowadays, you see that the trend of signs, whether they be highway signs or business signs, are that they are going more to LED, and they are going to more, oh, let's say, increased technology. And it's not just to be hip. That's because they've got greater visibility. There's a lot of studies that people do on these things by traffic engineers and whatnot. So, those materials are in the initial application, but we think that it's not contrary to public interest as far as any evidence at all of a chance that there's going to be traffic problems caused by this. Again, the sign in surface area is smaller than what's there now. We have two signs. We'd like to go to one, and we're talking about having an opaque black background. It's not flashing, shuts off at midnight. The fact that there was this illuminated sign across the street, again, that was a few years ago, I think if you compare what we want to do and the sign that was already there across the street, I don't think there's a real comparison. If I were a neighbor there, I'd much rather have a sign that's smaller and lower to the ground and a black background than a white sign that's hanging 15 feet or so high in the air. I think if that sign was there for whatever reason across the street, I'd see the board being hard-pressed why that sign would be allowed and why this sign shouldn't be. Again, the hardship features here, I mean, the reality is that we think this is an improvement to the overall neighborhood and character of the community, and that it does not detract from it. And I think that's the crux of this board's decision, whether the sign's going to adversely impact neighbors and the use and enjoyment of their property versus the applicant's. Spirit of the ordinance, I think I touched on that already, and maybe I'm beating it to death, but, you know, I'm willing to listen to neighbors and speak to their concerns, and Mr. Lennox is as well. We have some people here, I think, that are going to speak in favor of it, and we welcome that. And we also welcome people that are against it, because if there are concerns that we can address, whether it's altering the sign or repositioning it, I mean, again, we come here in spirit of cooperation. We want to get the sign done. We want to get it approved, but we want our neighbors to be happy with us, because after all, this is a small business in a relatively small town. It doesn't behoove us to come in here and anger people. So, if there's anything else that you'd like me to add?
I just wanted to restate the fact that we are trying to be a good neighbor within the community. Our current tax bill has just reached $55,000, which is pretty significant. And we are just trying to update a little bit. This is state-of-the-art technology. It's approved technology through the Department of Transportation. They're using more and more of it. It still is a little bit pricey, but that price is, you know, dropping as the technology advances. It's very dimmable. It's programmable, and we just see this as being a good thing all around. We provided, I provided a lot of technical information, you know, to the board over the last few months. I don't think we need to rehash all that information, but we're certainly prepared to do that. And just feel that we are trying to be cooperative within the community and utilize our property to our benefit.
And the last thing, too, maybe some of the board members are familiar with the When I went out there and walked the property with Mr. Lennox and looked at this, I tried to put myself in, obviously, I couldn't be in the neighbors' homes and go and see what their view's going to be, but I was looking to see, how is this going to impact on that house? What's the light going to be like on there? And what's it going to look like from the road? So, you know, again, I'm biased. So, people can speak their minds here, I'm sure they will. But the design of the sign and how, where it's positioned, and the size of it, and how it's dimmable, all those things were done with the idea of the neighbors in mind, because how would they benefit by, like I said, having an obnoxious sign? They want people to look at this and have it be attractive. They'd like to put, you know, community messages on it where appropriate. So, we don't want to have this stuff shining light. Conversely, you know, I've seen a single spotlight shining and bouncing off a white sign at night with nothing else around it. I would rather have this type of sign if I lived in that community, even just for the fact that it's going to be off at midnight, as opposed to what's there now is not. So, again, I think we're hitting all the points that we need to. If I haven't, if there's a certain point on the variance test that the board would like to hear from, be happy to entertain questions.
I don't have any myself. Members of the board?
The sign across the street, is it still operating?
No, it's not. It's been removed.
It's been removed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually have some questions, and there are more concerns about hardship. The type of electronic sign isn't really a question for me, because Goffstown does allow them. The only reason this is here for variance is because it is surrounded by residential. When you talk about the hardship, that this property is zoned commercial, mixed residential, agricultural, and that's unique to this property. It's unique to that property, but there's other businesses located in a similar zone. So, I'm kind of having trouble qualifying that as a hardship, along with some of your other arguments about the loss of revenue, the marketability, it's a tough economy. Again, none of those are unique to your business. That's something everybody faces. We all have challenges in our own industry. So, the one I'm really having the most difficulty with is hardship, and I'm actually having a hard time with the entire, with the entire section of hardship, because there is that strict criteria, and it's not a matter of liking it or not liking it. It's meeting the criteria.
Right.
And I don't see it.
Okay, so, for the hardship prong, I think we'd have to show that the zoning restrictions, as it's applied to the property, would interfere with the reasonable use of the property, considering the property's unique setting and its environment. We see this sign as a reasonable proposed use of this property, and therefore, not allowing it there would be interfering with the reasonable use of the property. I think you either agree with, yeah, the sign's reasonable, and it's a reasonable use of the applicant's property, and if it is, then denying it would prohibit that. But that's only one step. There's got to be, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. So, what does that mean? I mean, I look at this stuff, and I read some Supreme Court cases on it, and that's why I started off by saying, as I distill it, the gist of it is whether this would essentially alter the character of the locality, and negatively, obviously, if it improves it, I don't think there's a problem.
Well, I think you kind of have to start off and say, the reason you're here is because you're surrounded by residential. So, that's the condition you're here. So, when you say, "Will it affect the surrounding neighborhood?", that's a subjective question. And to say, "Well, no, we're a business and will still be a business," true, but there's a change, which is why you're here.
Right. And what I'm saying, I guess, and I appreciate that and agree with it, what we're saying is, will it affect, anytime there's a change, there's an effect, I think. But we're saying that what's there now, what's allowable, and what we want to go to is going to have a less, and let's just say, impact, adverse impact. When I say impact, I mean adverse, because I don't, it's very subjective, like you said. But is there going to be a negative impact? Is it going to be better, or worse, or the same? If you went there and looked at this, and you're standing in the neighbor's house, how is that going to affect them? That's the prism we're trying to look at this through.
That's one, that's one part of this. But it's the uniqueness, it's the hardship unique to the property, not your business or your industry or taxes or anything like that. It's strictly the property. That's where I'm still not...
Well, I think that, again, we come back to, does denying this variance, is that an unreasonable interference with the applicant's property? I would say it is, because what they're trying to do, they're essentially looking for a variance. If you look at the strict, it's the strict requirement of the code, we wouldn't be here if that weren't there. So, we're looking for the variance, but it's got to be consistent with the overall spirit of the code, and that's where I think the courts have come down. They look at this, and it's a weighing of the hardships, but it's also, like you're saying, if they deny it, what's the harm? It's kind of a competing harvest test. What's the harm to the applicant? And stripping away the whole business argument, the times are tough argument, we get that.
No, but one of the things you said was, you know, we're a nursing home.
Sure.
And you're going to be using that sign within the context of your business.
Right.
The variance doesn't go away. If the nursing home decides we're going to relocate and another business goes there, they're going to be operating that sign as whatever business they decide to be there. So, when you said we're a nursing home-
Well, I'm not saying, saying we're a nursing home, that's just a fact. I'm not saying that's a-
I understand, but you were saying that as, this is how we're going to use the sign.
Sure.
But we have to look at it and say, the sign can be there long after, if you decide next week, hey, you know what? We found this great deal and we're going to, you know, we're going to move. We can't predict the future, but we also have to look ahead and say, okay, how is this going to be, how is the, how is it going to be impacted if?
Whether they're a nursing home or whether they're any other business that would be permitted there, I take your point. We get that. I would still submit that you focused on the sign and the impact on the neighbors, not whether it's a nursing home or whether it's a Burger King, God forbid, which probably, nothing against Burger King, but I'm saying, you know, that, I think, would be a very different, different use. Again, the sign's smaller. We think it's a nicer sign. It falls in line with the trend. It keeps them competitive. Maybe that doesn't matter to the board, but as far as, again, hitting right on the unnecessary hardship prongs here, we think it's a reasonable use of the applicant's property to put a sign there that's smaller, that's going to throw off less light than what's allowed. Again, look at the sketch here. We wouldn't be here. They could put up a sign that's substantially bigger. It's higher in the air. They're going to have white lights shining on that. And how does that benefit the neighbors? I mean, how is that, we don't see that as being a good neighbor, just saying, "We can do it, therefore, we're going to do it." We look at this and said, "Well, we want to do something a little different, and because the way that the code is, we've got to ask for a variance." That's why we want to do this.
I would just like to point out that if the nursing home were to cease to operate, which has no plans of doing that, the new buyer of the property would want to change the sign. They would want to have the Bel Air nursing home that's no longer there. And with that, the new owner would have to go back to the planning board to alter the sign or to improve the sign, and therefore, the ZBA would have to-
To change the, if you just wanted to change the faces, like, keep the sign there and just change the faces, so instead of Bel Air Nursing Home, it said, you know, ABC, whatever company, you don't need any special, right?
You have to get a permit according to the regulation. You, no?
Camille, I say something.
Because that's just content.
As far as, you just opened up a door there. As far as, if there is another business, that's not all we're going for. We're just going for Bel Air. But my question is, there's a for sale sign there. What is that for sale sign about? Is it the property next to you or is it?
What that, it's a for lease sign for the apartments. We have seven independent apartments, and they're being managed by, I'm not even sure who, Remax, thank you.
Well, that's why I saw Remax, and I thought it was-
Yes, that's for the apartments. It's not for the, for sale of the property.
Mr. Chair-
The only reason I brought, I'm sorry, the only reason I brought up, they're a nursing home and somebody else, is that was, that's what I heard presented to us, that, you know, we're a nursing home, we're going to be using it this way. Otherwise, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have brought it up.
Mr. Chair, if I can just ask, answer the question about permitting on signs. So, signs, if this sign were to be approved and in some time in the future, some business wanted to come in, they would be only required to change the face. If they wanted to keep the LED portion and just, you know, paint over the, what's the Bel Air part or whatever, they could, they could do that and reface the top part and just use the LED portion as, you know, what it was approved for, under you guys. So, they would not have to go to any planning board to do that. They would come through my office, and I would be the one to review and approve a permit for that application. And it would be a pretty simple, you know, I wouldn't bat an eye. If it was just changing the face, the name on the top, it would get approved. It's-
I just understand that if you have, if you do change the face of the sign, they have to go to the planning board?
No.
They don't have to do that anymore?
No, they do not. No.
My question on this is, I think it has been since the initial hearing on this, is if it's indeed an unnecessary hardship to deny the variance, what is the hardship to the applicant in developing a sign that meets the current criteria? That's where I keep, I don't see the hardship to the applicant in just meeting the provisions of the current zoning.
Mr. Chair, couldn't the hardship be that it's a commercial zone enclosed with residential and agricultural? And because it's just a small piece of commercial zone, could that not be considered a hardship because of the spot zoning that was there? I'm just saying.
I think, first, we start off by saying, you know, sometimes having the right to do something doesn't mean you should do it. And, you know, we could put up this sign here on the right-hand side that's significantly bigger, that's meet, that's within code, and light it with a floodlight and be within the code. We think that would throw off more light and would not be considerate of neighbors. That would be, quite honestly, a lot cheaper. I wouldn't be here. The applicant wouldn't have to go to the sign company. They could do that a lot, you know, cost a lot less and not even ask your permission to put that up. So, that's what they could do. I mean, I think the applicant should be given some credit and consideration, in fact, in trying to do something, yes, to market their business better, but to do it in a way that takes into account the neighbors and the overall community because they care. They've been there for a long time, and they can want to be there for a long time. I think on the other point, as far as the hardship, there's three prongs to that test, and one of them, I guess, talks in terms of being, whether it's contrary or not to the public interest. And the Supreme Court in this state found that in order to be contrary to public interest or injurious to the public rights of others, the variance must "unduly", quote, "and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives." And, you know, without getting bogged down in case law and things like that, we don't think that the variance would be, you know, would be unduly and in marked degree in conflict with the ordinance. I mean, I think if you take a step back, you're right, they're neighbors there. They're in a, they're in a zone. There's residences around them. So, how do you have, run a business and have a sign and stay with the times and also be considered your neighbors? That's what the sign's about. So, we think that the unnecessary hardship test is met. Just, again, it's a reasonable use, and it's better than what we would be allowed to do by the code. And sure, we could pack our bags and do that, but that would be, I don't think that's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance when Gofftown did this.
Anything else from members of the board?
Not at this time. I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
I would, too.
Okay, I would. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be back. All right, are there any butters to this property who wish to speak on the proposal for, against, is there a hand in the back?
Thank you. My name is Kevin Fox. I live at 22 Center Street. I would like to first thank the board. This has been a long process. We started this in July, I believe, and I certainly hope, and I know that I'm not the only one, that we can get this over with pretty soon. Before addressing the things that I had intended to address, Mr. Lennox's sign, which you have just seen, I'm confused by such a submission when he shows what he could do, but at the same time says that doing that is not in his best interest and yet he could, so he would rather have a variance. It sends a confusing message, and I'll get back to this issue of the good neighbor in a moment. At a previous meeting, I'm sorry, I forget which, there was submitted a rather extensive document. I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of things in it. The Bel Air has testified tonight that they gave a study showing that there is no harm from such signs. I would like to draw your attention, although I'll point out the salient details for you. Page nine of that study, and I'm sorry, I can't be any more specific. The agitation on this is not ideal, mentions that, this is the study itself, mentions that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation showed, a study showed that a sign resulted in a 36% increase in crashes in one direction and a 21% increase in crashes in the other. As a similar note, I would draw your attention to the end section, which is a series of photographs of budding properties and, I believe, some similar signs. The first picture in that, which I will hold up for you for your own reference, but this, it is this one right here. It's the first picture. It's labeled View Bel Air Sign at 22 Center Street. I would like you to notice prominently in the foreground, the crosswalk sign that would be almost immediately next to this sign, which the Bel Air's own, the study that they submitted describes as potentially distracting. I would also point out to you that on the extreme left and by the light post sort of center-right, those are school bus stops. So, now we have a submission by an applicant which seems to run counter to his own claims that these are safe. And at the same time, he wants to put this potentially distracting sign right in front of a cross, we're right, yes, right in front of a crosswalk sign and within a very, very short distance of two school bus stops. And if anyone has driven by that area, Route 330, you'll know how very busy that area is. Additionally, I would like to address this idea of being good neighbors. This is the first I've heard of this concern from the Bel Air. They have never approached myself or any member of my family to discuss this. There has never been any, you know, seeking of opinions. In fact, I could not have even told you that there was a Robert Lennox who worked on Center Street until this started. He has said a number of times, the Bel Air has said, that they are allowed to put up a very large and unattractive sign. I'm not going to tell anyone how to run their business, but if he wants to make it look like a truck stop, that's his. This, this good neighbor business is completely foreign to the way this process has happened. We have now had two document dumps on the evening of board meetings. This has gone on for nearly six months now, and not once has Mr. Lennox reached out personally to me or anyone that I know of to discuss this matter. Furthermore, I would like to point out that, as other members of the board have mentioned, that the essential criteria of showing that there is a hardship, not from being declined this sign, but a hardship in complying with the current zoning regulations, has been manifestly unmet. At no point in all of this information does it show how the Bel Air is wronged by the ordinances of this town as they are written. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Alan?
If you had a choice in the matter, which sign would you like?
Kind of like the existing one.
And why?
The existing sign is, yeah, could it use some updating? Certainly. It's perfectly attractive. It's lit from the outside with a light that shines on it, not away from it. It in no way distracts from driving at night or from the attention of people going by. If people are looking for a nursing home, they know that there's one there. And it's my understanding that that's the purpose of a sign.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask one question before I go? And this is probably a question for Mr. Rose. There's been a lot of talk tonight and in the past about making certain concessions and, you know, sort of certain limits being placed on this sign, whether it's scrolling or flashing or dimming. In what way are those concessions enforceable by the town?
Mr. Chair, if I can answer. The dimming and all of that is not something that's listed in our ordinance, other than the, there's one provision that states that you cannot change what's on your screen more than once every 15 seconds. And it also cannot be animated, and it cannot have rolling or flash, flashing lights. So, those types of things, it basically can have, it can go from one screen, and then 15 seconds later, it can snap to the next screen, but it can't do all the animation and the, you know, little fading out, fading in kind of thing. It's supposed to be, just be strictly, you know-
Okay, but anything else?
But the dimming and all of that stuff is not required in our ordinance. It would have to be a condition of approval by this board in order to require and for me to be able to enforce the dimming.
So, the board would have to agree to it, and then you or someone else would have the power to actually enforce those?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Are there any other butters to the property who wish to speak? Man with your hand up, please come forward. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm Barbara Dexter, 36 Center Street. Basically, what I guess I'm asking is that he made a good point. This sign could be used by anybody else at a later date, by any other company that were using the facilities, or all they would need to do is change the name, but the electronics would belong to them, okay? There would be no control of what the electronics have, except for maybe like the animization or whatever you were talking about. So, in other words, we could have Dawn's Pipe shop across the street 10 years from now, or, you know, we really don't know because we have to count on change because things do change. You know, Bel Air has gone from a very small nursing home facility, as a lot of us know. They put on an addition. There really wasn't too much problems with the butters, having an issue with them expanding and doing those apartments. We were all good neighbors. We think the business should expand, and we want to see them succeed. But at the same time, we have a hard time with looking at these signs and finding that it's a hardship. I agree with my neighbor down the road. If he can come up with a paper here that says, "This is what I can do," now, this is a manual sign that he would put letters on, okay, then why couldn't he take his electronic sign and put his manual piece into the middle of that? You see what I'm saying? Without his electronics or whatever. In other words, put the middle piece in where his words are, okay, and he could put them in there instead of using the electronic sign in the center. Why couldn't he use those magnetic letters or whatever instead of putting them, I think it says 192 inches up in the air? Why couldn't he, wouldn't it best suit him to, not that I'm a tall person, I'm five feet tall, but this next sign says that it's no- that it's no bigger than sixty or the other one is no bigger than forty-eight, I don't see as where it's a hardship for him not to have the electronics and the digital and all of that. I see that he can meet the needs going up a hundred and ninety-two, but he could also meet those same needs at a lower, you know, on his lower scale. So I'm not really sure why we're looking at all of that. Because it just shows us that there is other ways that he could do things. But I want to also agree with my other neighbor that what I don't think Bob has thought about is that there are children in that neighborhood and the buses are having one heck of a time getting people to stop behind them. As they're coming up the knoll just before the nursing home, they cannot see the buses stopping. So they're already coming up. I mean, all we need is somebody be reading the sign and they're going to take out one of those school buses. The school buses stopped there because the children are not allowed to cross Center Street anymore because of the traffic rate at the hours of the afternoon. So I do agree with my neighbor. I, I think that it's not a good thing for safety purposes. We have quite a few accidents on Center Street already. We have quite a few people land on lawns. So I guess the biggest thing I can say is that Bob has a beautiful sign. I think it's attractive. I think it attracts people to the business that he does. I don't see it as a hardship that he can't have the electronics. I, I don't see that. I, I see that he has other ways of doing things he's choosing not to. And he's asking for a variance because he's making the choice not to use his other options. That's what I see. I really would hope that he would look at his other options because in honesty, there's a lot of things he could do. Good or bad, that's going to be up to Bob. I'm sure there's things in that code that, yes, he could do, that will upset his neighbors, that are within the code, and I'm sure that that's, you know, I can tell by looking at this, but that's his option. You know, but he also has other options. He's showing us a sign in the middle, but he has to have an electronic sign. If he doesn't have an electronic sign, then he needs a variance. I, I don't think that electronics is going to hurt his business not to have. Letters are letters, you know what I'm saying? I think he should look at his other options, you know? And I do think it's a very dangerous spot to be flashing anything. I think we all need to start thinking about that. It's a very dangerous spot. The knoll is there, the town has cut that knoll down when they redid the back road, and it is still, cannot come down much more because there's a giant piece of granite underneath there that runs under the house next to Bel Air Nursing Home, that that home is sitting on as a foundation. In order to do that, the town had to blow up the road back in the nineteen eighties and they had to bring it down to grade, but it was the furthest grade the town could do because of that big piece of granite. I know this because I was in the middle of the closing of the house next to the Bel Air Nursing Home. But I just want to say that the knoll was never able to be taken down enough so that people coming over the rise can see what's happening. So here they are coming over the rise and they're reading the sign and we got a bus stopped with a stop-out sign, you know? I'm just asking Bob to look at his other options. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, any members of the board, any questions? All right. Are there any other butters who wish to speak? Sir?
My name is Glenn Keen. Thirty Center Street, right across the street from the Bel Air Nursing Home. I understand you had a photograph that was passed around of my, something of my property, which I have yet to see. I'd like to see that if I could. And it was having to do with a Coke sign, which I personally took down as soon as I purchased the property two years ago because it did not fit with the look of the neighborhood. It had not been working for many, many years. Why it was allowed there, I do not know, but I removed it immediately because it did not look appropriate. With that being said, I have an article here from the Goffstown News, August first this year. And I'll pass this around afterwards, but it talks about installing traffic lights in intersections downtown here. And it actually was rejected. And the reason why is, and it actually states it here, "It was not considered to be in keeping with the character of the Goffstown Village." That's not from me, from any of us here. It was a decision of downtown for a certain look because we are a town, it's Goffstown, and this area, we're all here for, we all live here for a reason. We like that environment. I have nothing against the Bel Air Nursing Home. And I want them to do well. But his proposed sign does not fit with the look and character of the neighborhood. And I live right across the street. I will see it from all three bedrooms of my home, my bathroom and my living room. And how bright it is, is, and it's a huge, you know, information there of how many lumens, et cetera. How bright it is really isn't the question. Because we all know, or maybe we don't all know, I know, that they can change the brightness at any time. They can change what's on there at any time after this, to get a variance. And to come back through the process to get something rectified is a long process, which is why we're still here now, once that is granted. But it, I will see it from every, every spot on my property except for the back end. And it does not fit with the, and actually, my neighbor who showed up before me said there are other options. They're a nursing home. They're not, they're not a fast food restaurant. They don't need a LED sign. It's a very expensive sign, too. I don't understand why he would want to spend fourteen thousand, four hundred and something dollars on a sign. I don't know where he's going to see him getting his revenue from. I will show, this is the existing sign. It's off my computer, just printed. Yes, it's, it's low-key, it fits with the, the village look. It's pleasing to the eye. And as one of my other neighbors said, if someone wants to see it's a nursing home, they can tell there's a nursing home there. People go, go for a nursing home. They, they don't go doing drive-bys and looking for a nursing home as they drive down the street. They're, they're being referred there by a hospital or, or somebody in the healthcare industry. They just need to know where the Bel Air Nursing Home is. One of the other things was at nighttime, how bright it is. Here's a picture of it at nighttime. This is just a print off my computer from my little camera. The light does not shine at my house. It's actually perfectly lit and, and no, no issues at all. If he wants to repaint it or something, he's welcome to it, but actually it looks decent. Wants to make it a little bigger? If he wants to, if he wants to add in, as one of the neighbors said, something in the bottom so that he can put some messages on, which by the way, that sign on the other side was empty for a full month. Just sitting like this out in front, almost like a little garage sale. All right? Empty. And the only time there's something on it is when he's advertising for one of his apartments or, or a position, you know, in his place, which he's welcome to. I get no issues with that, but we talk about hardship. He doesn't need a neon, not a neon sign, an LED lit back sign to do that. And he doesn't even need it very often. I'm going to argue, it's right over my window, I see it all the time, he doesn't need it. There's no hardship, which is one of the major things he has to overcome. And really, it's about opinion. What do you consider a hardship? I'd say that, you know, there's no hardship. He doesn't need to have a, a sign with anything scrolling or changing. There hasn't been any community events put on there since this whole thing started, five months ago. And it's been empty for a good part of it. And the other part of it, it's just had, he has an opening in apartment, which he is welcome to do. It's his right. I have no problem with that. I want him to do well. He just doesn't need an LED lit sign. It doesn't fit the look of the neighborhood. So, and also, another item, one of the five items also is property value. I also would argue that that kind of look would decrease my property value. I, I purchased my property without that. I would not want to purchase my property with an LED backlit sign. That's better for Mass Road, where all the businesses are, where we are in a residential area. He chose to build his business in a residential area. It was a choice. We all make decisions. He, he knew where he was building his business. So is it a hardship that he, that we, that we surround him? No, that was his choice. He actually increased and built onto his business. That was a choice of his. So it's not a hardship. It was a decision he made. And the variances and the ordinances of zoning are there to protect the residents. And that's what it's actually doing right now. And he's here because he wants to go out of that. And there's no hardship there at all. I'm going to keep it short. I think we've heard a lot, even though you haven't been here before, we've all heard a lot. The big item really comes down to, it's not how bright it is. It's, it's, is there a hardship? I would say there is none at all. He has other options. He's a nursing home. He doesn't need to have all kinds of things scrolling back and forth. And later on, we'll have no control over it. Because he'll do what he, and I'm stuck. I'm, I'm the neighbor. I'm seeing it from every angle. I do not need to see that out in my, I want to see trees. I want to see nice homes. That's why I live in Goffstown. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Any other butters who wish to speak?
Yeah.
You're an abutter, sir, or a member of the public?
An abutter.
Please come forward, identify yourself. Welcome, and thank you very much.
This is working, I guess?
Yep.
My name is Lauren Kaye. I'm the first house on Juniper Drive, number eleven.
Could you spell your last name?
C-A-Y-E-A. I'm by far the largest abutter of this property. And I have no objection to them putting this sign up here or improving the sign they already have. It barely is an improvement of what they have. An LED sign is like your microwave. It doesn't glare out or project light out like the large sign is going to do. If you don't accept this sign, you're going to get the big sign. The big ugly sign with the big light shining on it. You're going to have a sign regardless. You talked about school buses and traffic. You're going to have a sign there. A business has to have a sign to advertise itself. This sign here will be able to, as far as putting little letters on the bottom of the sign, there's no room for that. Plus, no one reads that. And this, this digital sign would be for if they had a family welcome at Thanksgiving to visit, you know, for dinner, or a room is available, or a bed is available, whatever it is. We all have a vested interest in this business being successful. Their taxes just went up seven thousand dollars. They pay nearly, I'm sure, ten times of what the abutter we're talking to tonight here do in taxes. And so we all have a vested interest in this business being successful. It's been an excellent employee, an excellent neighbor for me, very quiet compared to other businesses that might be there if they were to leave and somebody else started it up. It's been an excellent employer for the children around the area, the high school. My daughter herself spent six years there from high school to college. And I have, abiding my properties, I have six people who presently worked there or have worked there in the past. So it's a good employer. And we should be happy to have it in the neighborhood. Their civic pride is huge. The property is impeccable. And like I said, it's very quiet there. And I don't know when anybody's ever come and knocked on my door and said, "Hey, Lauren, I'm going to put up a bird bath in my front yard. Do I have your approval?" You know, people don't do that. It doesn't happen like that. And I don't feel it. I have the right to go to a neighbor and say, "Hey, I don't like your bird bath, your fence or whatever the hell you're building there. Take it down." You know? And I, I think that people are alarmed over this sign. And like I said, your microwave doesn't glare at you and it doesn't project light. And this big sign here is going to be lit up. It's going to have two big lights, one on each side of it. And it's going to be huge. That's the alternative. So I think this is a better use of, you know, I think it's a better sign than what the allowable sign is. And it's time to get, it's time to get out of the eighties. These signs are six seventies, eighties. They talked about tonight about the town's, you know, the historic, the, my house is not historic. And I'm the biggest abutter. My house is thirteen years old. So, you know, the historic part there, really in that area, I don't really see it. You know, it's not like it's, you know, Martha's Vineyard or something like that. It's not like that, than the, all the other houses that are around this area. So, but anyways, like I said, we all have vested interests in this place being successful. They do pay huge taxes. If that was a single home there, the tax would be six thousand dollars, not sixty. And if another business goes in there and they want to use that sign and put the name over the top, so what? They're going to have a sign anyways. So what's the difference? And I think that this sign is going to be a lot nicer. And it looks like the old sign everybody seems to like, but it's going to have a little digital box on the bottom like the police station does. It's going to tell you when they're having, like I said, family members can come for Thanksgiving dinner or we have a bed available. I know that the apartments in the front that were built some time ago have not been that successful. And, and this is going to get rid of that stupid real estate sign everybody's confused about. And that old trailer sign they had sitting up there is gone now and it's hanging now on a post. It's going to give it a three signs in the place of one. So I only see it as an improvement. And I could speak for my neighbor who also abuts them, but I won't mention his name, but I know he's not opposed to this either. He's not here tonight. But anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anything from members of the board? Are there any other butters who wish to speak? Are there any other interested parties or members of the public who want to be heard on this issue? Seeing, seeing none. Mr. Hammond, was it? Mr. Hammond, Mr. Lennox, do you wish to respond to anything that you have heard?
Yeah, you'll briefly. Hi. I think the decision of the board is going to be within the five prongs of the, the variance standard. For a lot of things, the board and the applicant appreciates that, even, even the comments that we don't agree with. Again, we understand the, the process. The, the three points on unnecessary hardship, and I think the key one is, is that the zoning restriction as applied to this property, whether it interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property, considering the property's unique setting and the environment. I think this hinges on whether you think the sign's reasonable. Because that's the first step. If this, if the, if that's, if that sign's a reasonable use of the property, then I think it, it tilts to the next prong of the unnecessary hardship standard, which is that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. I think that is, what is, what is the effect on the neighbors? What is the point of this, of the specific restriction? I, I think I get it. You know, having the, the one light that's shielded, I think is to protect people around, around the sign. How is this going to affect their, their life, their use and enjoyment of the property? We, we get that. But if you look at, if that's the general purpose of the, the ordinance, meaning to have a pleasant, as pleasant as possible surrounding for the, the neighbors that it impacts, and the specific restriction being one white light on this, and you look at what we're actually proposing. We're proposing something that's going to be within the spirit of that ordinance. It's going to be less of an impact, less of an adverse impact on the neighbors. That's the second prong. And then the third prong of the variance, being not injurious to the public or private rights of others. I talked about that in the, the Vigno case that the Supreme Court talks about. I think it's a pretty high standard. If it's going to be doing substantial harm or being market difference, that's what you have to find if this, if you're going to find that it's injurious to the public interest. I don't think that it is injurious to the public interest or the, the private rights of others. I understand and respect that people have their opinions and their thoughts and maybe they would rather have the sign that's still there. I don't think that's the standard. I think the standard is whether it's injurious to their public rights. And again, the court's found that that's more than just a nuisance or that someone doesn't like it or that someone has a different business opinion. It's got to be a market decree from what's there now. So I focus my comments and I'll, I'll be quiet at this point because I, I think what I kept hearing was unnecessary hardship, that the applicant hasn't met those, that burden we think that they have. Lastly, the safety issues, school buses and those types of things, we don't have anything that's indicated at all that there would be increased problem. And I submit that the opinions of the neighbors are just that. Their, their opinions and we take them at face value. But what we submitted were traffic studies. I mean, again, if, if the board were inclined to continue this and wanted to require New Hampshire DOT to weigh in on this, or the, the local police department, for instance, or police department, for instance, or the state police to look at traffic studies or things, we're open to that. Again, we, we're not just saying that. We don't want to increase problems. We don't believe that it would increase any traffic problems. But again, we're willing to comply with what the board might deem necessary to, to have the sign put through. Property value, Mr. Keen mentioned the decrease in property value. Again, I, I think that's, I don't have any evidence that shows that that's the case. And I submit that he doesn't either. It's probably his guess. Maybe he doesn't like it. And I, I believe it's genuine. But I, I submit that that's just not a, we don't have enough evidence to show that that's, that's really the case. And then the other thing was, once it's there, you're stuck with it. And that there, you know, once you allow this, it's going to be like a floodgate. We've already said, we have no problem with having conditions put on this sign. First and foremost, that it be shut off at midnight versus having a light on there all night. So we would agree to that. However, the board wanted to do that, make a, you know, condition of the granting it, or do a letter agreement, whatever it is. But we're not looking to sneak one in here and get a sign there and then blow it up. And we, that's not, well, it's not the way this applicant's behaved, or will it. That's all. That's all I had.
Mr. Hammond?
Alan.
It shows on the dike, the drawing that you gave us this evening, there's a note that says, "Sign with dark background and internally illuminated lettering graphics." Does that mean that the top Bel Air nursing home text is going to be illuminated from behind?
It would be illuminated from inside.
From inside?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just, can I see that for a second? I just want to make sure that I understand your question, that you do too. This part, the Bel Air?
It was illuminated from inside.
From inside?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Well, that raises another question. So the sign that you're asking for, there's, there's actually two things in here. There's the illuminated identification part, and then there's the LED.
Right.
When you show the larger sign
Right.
Of what, and there's been this either/or tonight.
Right.
If you don't approve this, you're going to get this. And you've talked a lot about having spotlights on this sign. It's conceivable you could take this larger sign design. You could propose it, and, and right now, I don't even want to talk about the, the changeable message part. Because for me, it's not a matter of, it's, it really has nothing to do with liking it. And I have, I prefer electronic changeable signs to manual. And it's not the messaging that I'm thinking about tonight. It's the lighting. This is all about lighting.
Right.
there could be a proposal to take this larger design. Let's just say you leave it the size that it is. You have an opaque background. You have illuminated letters and graphics so that at night, you have an illuminated sign. And again, you'd be here asking for a variance, but you'd be, it would just be a whole different look, a whole different flavor. So, so the whole thing about either/or tonight just hasn't really quite settled with me. Because there's so much more in between that comes between this and this. So this certainly is what you could do. But there's a lot of alternatives.
Sure, definitely. I think that the point in that was, I think the point is that they're trying to do something that, yes, they need a variance for. But instead of just saying, well, let's, let's do what we can do. That's what I said. That's the point. Now, the design in the middle, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, in terms of when somebody says, well, it's electronic, and there's buses, and there's kids, and there's a crosswalk. Honestly, this is not a safety thing. Because if message centers are allowed in other parts of the town, then in my mind, the safety factor has been addressed. So safety is not a concern of mine. It is, but not, not because of the electronic sign here. It's, it's really not about, you know, a lot of the things that the abutters said. But there's, there's three things that they said that really stick in my mind. And three out of the four abutters said, "We don't see the hardship. We don't see the hardship. We don't see the hardship." Those, you know, that, that was the common thread. They said a lot of other things. I don't particularly agree is relevant to deny it. But those three comments do.
With all due respect to the abutters, that's, that is a, a legal question, a standard that this board is probably more familiar with than the general public, that I think we can throw words around. But, you know, we talk about what the Supreme Court of the state has found is defined as hardship, is more than just, "I don't like it, therefore it's a hardship." Or their business could do something different.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't referring to, "I don't like it. It's not a hardship."
Right.
That's not what I was referring to.
So the sign itself, ma'am, is there, are you saying that you don't have a problem with the illumination internally? It's just, I'm trying to find out what, what the, what your objection is.
The whole reason that this variance exists is because you're looking to have a specific type of lighting on your sign within the boundaries of a residential district. So, so the residents, your abutters, are extremely relevant. They're, you know, you talk about being a good neighbor. They're the neighbors too. So, you know, you've got to look at it, you've got to look at it that way. And you've got three, and one in particular saying directly, and I think that's what that whole rule is.
May I suggest that this would be an internal
Sure.
Board discussion?
Yep.
At this point?
Sure.
Go ahead, Len.
Just a question. Some ways in here, I read that, that the sign is to be placed six feet back from the property line. And that itself doesn't meet the zoning ordinance either. Is that correct, Brian? It's 10 feet in the commercial zone.
In the commercial zone, there is a 10.
And they would have to establish the property line, which is significantly behind the edge of the sidewalk.
Currently, that one advertising sign they have hung out there, really big sign.
Is in the right of way, or close to it. So when you think about the position of that sign, it's supposed to be 10 feet beyond that, away from the street. And I think, I think I have correct about the 10 feet.
That, that wouldn't be part of this discussion, though. I mean, it, it would be an issue that I would have to look at as I'm going through the permitting process and making sure.
They asked for six feet in their presentation, in the information they gave us. They said six feet.
The variance wouldn't be for six feet. It would be for the lighting only. It's not, it's not granting them anything else
All right.
Regarding that.
How about, okay. Then that's all the questions I have the applicant.
All right. Anything else from other members of the board? I will only say the one, two points for me that come out. I think I made the one before that, like Kathy, I'm having difficulty seeing the hardship attached. The other thing, and perhaps, this is the first time I recall hearing tonight about the internal illumination on the identification portion of this. And my impression from our previous hearings on this, we, I thought we were pretty well confined just to the illuminated messaging portion. And, you know, perhaps, perhaps I'm coming late to it, but a realization that we're talking about internal illumination on the entire sign and not just the messaging piece.
Mr. Chair, if there are no more questions for the applicant, we probably should finish the public hearing.
I would very much like to. Thank you. Nothing further?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Before, having heard, the applicant having a chance to answer, I think I'll close the public hearing at this point. Any objections from the board members?
No.
The hearing is closed. I'll take the sentence of the board. Do we want to deliberate now, or with the number of other items that we have on the agenda, move through and deliberate at the end of the meeting?
I think we can deliberate now.
Yeah, leaving them to the end of the meeting is...
I mean, everybody, not always through any fault of their own. They've been waiting for months. And I don't think deliberations is going to be that extensive. If it is, we could probably stop it and continue it later. But I think we could.
All right, then, yeah. Let's move into deliberations at this point. Anyone?
I think Kathy, at the point that when she mentioned a few of the items on the sign, I did not, or was it Len?
Yeah, it was me. I stepped up.
The green part was illuminated, and the, the black part was going to be LED. Is that what they're saying?
That's correct. So the, the duck or loon or whatever, and the Bel Air and the nursing home are actually letters that are illuminated from behind on both sides of the sign.
In the presentation, they were just talking about this little LED.
Well, most of the time, they were talking about the LED. But there are two components to this sign. One is the internally illuminated letters, indicating that the name of the business and what they do. The second was the LED message board. That's how it's described, and the information is given to you.
Right, right here.
And so when it comes to the message board, there's criteria that might be coming to play would be how many times a day they can change the text. That can be established. You can set the, the things about no moving lettering or scrolling of things. I mean, the typical things for LED signs. Then I have this thing about lumens and intensity. When you look outside, you can see starlight, but you're not impacted by starlight because of the distance intensity. It's the same thing with a light on a, on a site. There's intensity, and that's why many times you get diagrams of lighting intensity to demonstrate on a site plan how your neighbors are affected in terms of visual impact. That's light impact. You'll never change the visual impact because you can see light. But you're not impacted with it by terms of brightness on yourself. You're not shadowed. So there's two different circumstances. One, you can see it without question. But if, if a sign is facing like this, and it's facing this way, and you're directly across the street, your impact is also much narrower because you're not facing the sign. Actually, the neighbors to the right and left are more greatly affected by the visible light, not the illuminated light. So, and I didn't hear from either one of those two that they were affected, or were against this type of proposal. And in terms of time restrictions, I think this board can establish any kind of time restrictions that they want. I think is a condition of, of consideration. I really think the thing to get most people going is the moving lettering distracts you. If it's a sign that says a message, you know, apartment opening or whatever, it's less distracting than something that is scrolling across the seats, the sign, as you're going down the street, because you're trying to catch the content. I don't think this sign is big enough for that to begin with, from my experience.
Well, whether it is or not, there's a lot of things that can distract a driver. And I'm not, I'm not a fan of saying, well, somebody could be distracted by a message. If they choose to look at the sign, if you're driving, and you choose to take your, your eyes off the road, there's nothing forcing anybody. We all make choices. And I think whether it's a sign, or whether it's, you know, beautiful gardens at a house, a lot of things can distract you for a lot of different reasons. I don't, I don't see where the distraction factor is, is even, is even part of this. Because signs are, signs are allowed, signs with electronics are allowed in the town. This is purely the way I see it. It's lighting within a 250-foot boundary of residential. So it really isn't, it isn't about the electronics.
I think it's also about dimming. I mean, I've seen bright LED signs, and I've seen what I consider to be muted, and it has to do with color.
It is about the lighting.
It, it's all about the lighting. So I don't know how you establish that. How do you control that?
Aspects of lighting. Is it, there's a medium one, low one, high one, and the illumination? Is there intensity? What is, are there different intensities in the lighting and the...
I mean, there, there are, there are technical details that, that they can submit and that we can talk about. But if you're, if you're across the street, how do you, you know, only that person, only neighbors can quantify what their experience is going to be. You and I might say, oh, that's not bad at all. And the neighbor might say, well, actually it is. I, I don't, I don't, it, it does become somewhat subjective. I don't think you can quantify it and say, well, so many lumens are okay, and over this amount of lumens is not. I'm not sure that's, because it's going to depend on how far away the neighbors are, and the angle, and all, you know, it gets, it gets very subjective when it comes to that.
I have one concern. And I really hate to bring it up, but the concern is that we have a, a neighbor on the same road that asked for illuminated sign, and we denied it because it was abutting the residential zone. And so we told them they could put the external illumination. And that's it. But the fact, the factor remained that when we went to visit other signs, they told us they had some in Portsmouth, they had some in Londonderry. So we went to see those signs. And the one in Londonderry was illuminated by the external lights because it was all abutting residential. But the one in Portsmouth was industrial zone, and it was an illuminated.
Is that the YMCA sign?
No. Was internally illuminated.
But that, that could be, in that particular case, the planning board had also promised the neighbors that there would never be an illuminated sign there.
I didn't know. But you were on the planning board though.
I was on the planning board at the time. And I, I made that presentation to you that night, of reference that sign.
Well, probably that was one of the factors too. But I know the consideration that we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were going to do the right thing.
Yeah. But I mean, it's, when I, when I think about signs, it's all about, I can see the light, but I'm not impacted by it.
Right, right.
And is that, is that a case?
Yes. I just, I just didn't want that to go back and bite us in the butt.
No. I don't think so.
And I think this goes to the question that was mentioned by one of the abutters about character. I think it was established in the earlier hearings that on that side of the lake, the road all the way from the city line into the, where it meets 114 at Sully's and the library, there are no signs of this nature there. And if you're talking about preserving the character of the area, I think that has to factor in. With Mast Road isn't a commercial, a straight commercial area with very little residential, you're talking about an entirely different thing. And I think we need to look at the effect that it would have on that portion of the road. Anything further? Any motions anyone wishes to make?
When you talk about this signage on, I'll call it Gofftown, Gofftown Back Road, Elm Street and Center Street, it's because there's not a lot of commercially and industrially zone land in that area, except when you're right next to Manchester. And when you get the Graspry, there's a little bit, a little clump there. Then you've got the nursing home, and then you've got the Perry Egg Farm, is what it was, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, Perry's.
And, and he hasn't had eggs there for as long as I've lived in town.
Well, probably 1960s something, or 70s, yeah.
And, and then going the rest of the way, you've got some signage at the power lines that are unlit from the guy with the stones.
Poggiar.
Poggiar. And I'm trying to think.
There's the transfer station sign. There's the school.
Schools. So, yeah, this sign is there. The, this school sign is changeable letters.
Yeah.
Poggiar is just flags.
Right.
The town sign is changeable letters because the town
That's when they're off, yeah.
Yeah, changes notices. It's pretty consistent. I mean, the, the diggers put out little A-frame signs when they got enrollment going on, or, or a flag or something like that.
Mary Lou.
Yeah, Mary Lou at the, at the, at the Grange Hall.
Yeah.
Trying to think what else is, I've visually seen. The YMCA has a sign out there that's externally lit, actually at the top.
Yeah.
So we've got a variety of signings out back and forth and around. I'm not to think there's any one condition here. The Animal Hospital, TD Bank on the first of the street out here.
Yeah, now you're in there.
Now you get into a little commercial zone down here again. So I think there's, you know, I think this site is probably zoned commercial because it was, it became commercial at some point in time and then was rezoned commercial is what I think.
Yeah.
At some point in time.
I don't know when that happened.
It's a long time ago. So I think there's, there's never been any great changes on, I'll call it the Gofftown Back Road, access to town compared to 114, nor will there ever be any bigger changes. So from my point of view, in terms of, you know, of variance, you know, all these facts are hard to prove. Do I have a problem with LED signs? The absolute answer is no, I don't have a problem with it at all. But in this instance, there is an ordinance that says you can't have them unless you prove these five factors, and I don't see it.
That's where I am.
That's what it comes down to, it's going to meet the criteria. And if it doesn't meet the criteria, whether we like it or not, doesn't matter, it never matters, what matters is if it meets the criteria.
I mean, this is a case where if the criteria didn't exist, personally, I don't have a problem with it, but that's, it's not, it's not about that.
But the criteria exists because of its proximity to a residential zone.
Yeah.
I'd have to think that.
On the other hand, does it meet the criteria for this sign?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Oh, it certainly does.
Well, and.
You don't need a variance for that.
You don't need a variance for that sign.
And I, and I actually.
But still.
So you don't have to meet any criteria?
Right.
No, you don't have to meet any criteria, but would it meet any criteria? I mean, it's a legal sign, they can put it whenever they want to, but you're saying this will not meet the, some of the criteria, a criteria. But if this sign was going up for variance.
We don't, if it's.
I know it's not, I know it's not going up for variance, but.
You can't consider it as a variance requirement if it's allowed. And by ordinance, it's allowed.
I think the drawing is somewhat of a Hobson's choice.
Well, if you ask me, I'd give you the same thing, okay? I mean, that's, this is what I could do.
Oh, sure, but, but it's the.
This is what I'd like to do with these circumstances.
But I think there's something that, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot that could be done with the, with what's allowed, with the size, the height. I think there's a lot that could be done to make it, and I forget who said it, but they said, you know, you're going to have this, you know, terrible looking sign, there's no need for that at all, it doesn't have to be a terrible sign, and it's always subjective. I mean, you know, somebody's going to look at this, half the people are going to like it, you know, half of the next half are going to not like it and the other half aren't going to care, but if everybody, if you're saying that this is what's allowed and you don't like it, then don't put it up, try again. I mean, you know, there's always, there's always a new design or something that could be done to, to make it look better, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be stuck with something that you didn't like.
I think they tried the first time if we told them to try this, try again, so this is the second time they try. So I mean, I don't think we're in a position to tell them that they can do something different. I mean, this gentleman here that does the signs must have come up with quite a few proposals, but I don't think we have the, we're not in a position to say, try again.
And if this is, but, but if this is, this bigger sign is one that you like, then if it's allowed, yeah, I mean, it's, it's allowed, I mean, Brian doesn't have to like it, you know, the neighbors don't have to like it, if it's allowed, it's allowed.
One of the neighbors, one of the neighbors that faces the sign is almost at an angle, so they're going to see that sign. It's, he's not straight in there, if you go by, he's not straight, he's like an angle where he can see the sign, his house will be able to see the sign.
Well, let's just take the five criteria. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, what's the answer to that one? Is it a simple yes or no, or does it require explanation?
Granting of the variance, I don't have the, my, I don't have it in front of me.
I'm making it very simple, the first sentence of the paragraph that's on page eight. Forgetting about all the other verbiage in the paragraphs succeeding after that, would granting the variance be contrary to the public interest?
I would say granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, I don't have a problem with that one.
Okay.
I do. I think, well, are we talking public in general or are we talking via abutters?
I'm talking personally, I look at it as the, the general public, and that means people from out of town, driving through residents, neighbors, everybody as a whole.
I'm not sure.
I would, I would say, I would tend to agree with Kathy, in terms of the general public, I don't have an issue with this particular criteria, I have some issues further along, but again, I think in general, it's, it's not contrary to the public interest. And I'll move along, Alan.
Okay, go to number two.
Spirit of the ordinance is observed because.
That's why we're here, to make that call.
Well, if the ordinance is designed to protect the abutters as well as the applicant, which one, you know, you've got to kind of address the harm, the harm that would be done to either or. And the abutters that we've heard, and not just tonight, but the other night, the, when they were here back in July as well, they were really concerned with the lighting and how it's going to affect their life, and like you said, it's subjective, it's, we can't say it's going to or it's not going to, we don't live in that neighborhood, but they have that deep-rooted concern. So I think if it was granted, it would not necessarily meet the spirit of the ordinance in, where, especially with the abutters are concerned.
Okay, so what is illuminated signs? How do you protect the public with a, with illuminated, when you have an illuminated sign?
Well, it's possible that this property, if the property were arranged in such a way that the residential boundary lines were in excess of 250 feet, they wouldn't be here for variance, they would meet the criteria, it's because, it's because they're encroaching on that buffer zone.
So the real people that are concerned, that we should be concerned with, are the immediate neighbors.
Right.
That's why the 250 feet is there.
Right, and since it's encroached to a degree where, in my opinion, they do have a say-so, they've said so. If, if there were, if there were no abutters here at all and nobody really cared one way or the other, I mean, we'd be having a whole different discussion, but.
Or there wasn't a, a solution that met the criteria of the abutters.
Exactly, right.
So there's things like time of operation, you know, from, thing is off from 10 to 6, 10:00 PM to 6:00 PM, they said midnight, does that, that basically, what does that shut off? That shuts off the lights, then shuts off the LED. During the daytime, the LED would be on, early evening hours, early morning hours, they could illuminate the sign, basically. Does that, in the, in the other members of the board, does that protect the immediate abutters in terms of the spirit of the ordinance? Because when are you most affected? You're most affected when you have bedrooms on the front of the house and the lights directly across the street, or something of that nature.
But this time of year, it's starting to get dark real early, 4:30 in the afternoon, and if the sign goes off at 10, that's, I mean, if you're, if you're in the house and you're affected by it, or, you know, if it affects you, that's, that's still, that's still affecting you, whether it affects you a little bit or a lot, I think it still affects you.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because.
Personally, I don't like to take into consideration anybody else's use of LED signs, period. We're looking at one case at this location, and so I think we have to look at it, have they done the best they can when it comes to designing this sign and the use of current technology, which is internal illumination, which I think is probably less obtrusive than ground surface lights, and an LED sign where we control how often it changes and how long it's on, and I hate to even talk about it is, but how intense is the light? Because if you go to, I mean, I find some, I find some LED signs offensive because they're bright, there's one right outside my office.
And it's not the sign, I, I'm really convinced, it's not the sign you don't like, it's the programming, because every sign has the ability.
And I don't know how we control that.
The programmer controls that.
I mean, I know that the, was ever at the.
How do you control it in here?
Yes, how do we control it here?
Well, that's like trying to dictate good taste or, or something like that, it's.
You'd have to be out there pure policing it every day.
Exactly.
But I think if you could control it to a point where, then I think you're in the justice category, that you've made the best decision you can make to control the use of that sign as it pertains to the immediate abutters, because that's what the real concern is here. It's not people that live 1,000 feet away, this ordinance is 250 feet away. Am I out of school here, Brian?
Anything further? The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished.
I can't really, I can't really address that because I, I don't, you know what, you'd have to, I'd have to see the sign. Sign up to see if my property would be diminished.
From a visual standpoint and a professional standpoint, I don't think this sign is proposed would diminish the surrounding property values at all.
I think the other one would, with the big lights, I don't know.
And as a personal preference, I would say a smaller sign controlling how it's illuminated and whatever, get it back from the edge of the road so it meets the ordinances in terms of identifying the property line, and a 10-foot setback beyond that puts it way up on the hill, doesn't put it down close to the road like the two existing signs.
And our last point, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, and this, for me personally, is where my sticking point has been all along on this, that, you know, there are some things, it's need to have, nice to have, and nice to have, I don't think creates a hardship, and I've just failed to see the demonstration of hardship in this all along.
My take on it is that I think they wanted to look more professional than having all these little signs all over the place, so they have just one sign, granite, granite cubes and have the professional look.
Cheryl.
I, I think as Kathy points out, though, that there are a lot of possibilities for somewhere between number three and number four here, there are a lot of possibilities for upgrading, improving within the bounds of the current ordinance without going to the absolute maximum worst that we could do under the circumstances.
So cut to the chase, would you entertain a proposal of the sign the size of as proposed without the LED lighting? Let them, let them do the signboard. Changeable letter signboard.
Put a signboard with the LED lighting.
Yeah.
There was no room for that, there's not much room, how big is that black?
What do they ever say? R and R time?
I would say with, I would say with or without it, because, you know, to say they can have it is fine, if they say, no, we don't want that kind of changeable sign, they don't have to have it, but I would say that sign with or without a manual board, I mean, that's, that's easy.
But without the internal illumination? No, I, I have no problem with the internal illumination on Bel Air, absolutely not.
I have no problem with the digital, because if it's like the police department, the LED is not, is not.
It's subdued, it's orange and it's subdued, their, their lettering doesn't change that often.
But they, but one of their drawings has the view of the changeable, the electronic part shows in white, it's not orange.
I mean, here, there's.
They could make the light whatever color they wanted it to be, it could be orange, it could be blue, it could be yellow, it could be white.
And the one at the police station is just a one color, they can, it can only be orange.
I think the, the neighbors have a problem with the internal illumination.
No, they didn't, they had a top, they, I don't think, I didn't hear internal illuminated sign once tonight until I asked it.
Well, I did at the first meeting.
Okay, but I did hear a lot about LEDs and how bright they were and all that stuff, and that, I did hear that. I, I don't think the impact of the, the lighting, if we control the time issue, is any worse than the lights that are on the sign right now that don't work, one of them I don't think even works right now. So. I, I think there's a. I, I think an internally lit sign in that location would be fine, as proposed. Would you like, would you like to make a motion to that effect, Alan?
The internally lit, internally lit sign would be fine, but the LED lighting is not any brighter than the internally lit.
But you can't control it, until we can find a method to control it, then it's, it's a problem.
What do you mean by control it?
This board has no authority to, to act as the police in terms of intensity, lumens, how far it shines away from it, and all those kinds of issues.
You can put the hours on.
The hours we can, yes.
All right, I'm still fishing for a motion here if anyone wants to.
Listen, I'm new to this, I'm new to this scene, I'm just, I'm being an instigator here more than anything else, okay?
Yes, we know.
Well, for the sake of getting this on the road, I'll make a motion to approve.
No conditions.
Oh, we have condition, the condition is just the hours of lighting.
The sign as requested with the internal illumination as well as the LED?
That's midnight to 6:00. Midnight to 6:00 AM, that's what they stated.
Not to be lit.
Yes.
From, from when?
Midnight to 6:00.
Is that the hours that you want?
That's what they suggested in their presentation.
But you also mentioned 10 to 6, so I don't know which way you're going.
I would do 10.
If I may offer a friendly amendment on that, I think, isn't it the Irving and the other stations, their lights go off at 11? I would say as splitting the difference compromise, off at 11:00 PM until sunrise.
I think it's just the Irving, yeah, just the Irving because of the neighbors across the street wanted it turned off at 11:00. Not 11:05, not 11:03, 11:00.
I'm not sure if the, whether Cumberland has one or not, I thought they did. I offer 11 for purposes.
They have LED number board.
Yeah, and there's a, there's also a number of changes allowed, or did that get done away with, once a day? So we have a motion.
So we have a motion on the floor by Vivian to approve as requested with an hours restriction that will go off from, what, what time do you propose, Vivian?
She said 10:00 to 6:00.
10:00 PM, 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM. Is there a second for that?
Only, only if she'll consider amending the motion, would I second it.
All right, I'll take your amendment.
There must be 10 feet back from an established front property line?
I think that's what he said he was going to.
Further zoning ordinance? That it be 40 feet from the side yard to the west? That's the old house?
Yep.
To the west? Which is the only close impacting on that side? That no time and temperature be displayed? Who wants that? It's showed on the sign, application?
You can't control content.
Yeah, content is-
Why?
You can't say that they can say one thing and not another, freedom of speech.
Oh, good. All right, don't tell my boys that.
Well, I think the further back, like you're saying, Lynn, the further back they put on their property, the better it's going to be for the residential. I, I, I've seen illuminated signs, but I-
I don't know whether we can talk about moving lettering? And scrolling, scrolling lettering, that's all already controlled. That's already controlled, right? By ordinance, so we don't need that.
Brightness is not controlled.
Brightness is not controlled, so we can't do that.
You, you can as a condition, but-
But again, it's the, it's the-
I don't know what to put for the brightness, I have no idea about signs.
And I think that's why, that's, that's why that, the ordinance reads the way it does, when you're within 250 feet of a residential zone.
You have to talk about it.
It's, it's a big thing, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if this were, you know, again, if the boundaries were that 250 feet or greater, terrific.
How many feet do you think?
I'd, I'd like to, given the number of other items we have on the agenda, if we can do that, uh, you accept, Alan, Alan, you're seconding, and Vivian, you've said you will accept his amendments? As part, part of the second, so we have it moved and seconded.
For discussion purposes.
Okay, and I'd like Gail, just for clarification, Gail could give us back.
Well, how far did we go? Okay, the motion to approve the sign with the interm, internal illumination and LED lighting with the hours from 10:00 to 6:00 PM, the lighting is, is off? With Alan's suggestions that it be moved, it must be 10 feet from the established front property line, and that it be 40, 40 feet, 40 feet?
From the west.
From the west, yeah, from, from the side yard to the west. And you put no time and temperature be displayed.
Well, that part-
That's been deleted.
Well, what I'll, what I'll say is, whatever that, whatever the motion says, I don't think it changes that it doesn't meet the criteria, in, in my opinion. It, it's still, that doesn't address the hardship part of it. So.
So we have it moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion is submitted.
Now, I agree with Kathy, it still doesn't meet the hardship criteria. No, one of the, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application to the provision, of that provision to the property. There certainly is a relationship between, because you, they are within 250 feet and significantly less than 250 feet from a residential area. So just that alone tells me it doesn't meet the hardship criteria. Is it a reasonable use? Maybe in another location it's a reasonable use, but in this location, because of the residents and the, the residential use that is abutting them, it's not, not as reasonable as it would be if it were in another area. So that's my input.
And I think Gail has hit two very salient points on that. Any further discussion before we call for a vote?
All I gotta say, it's a business. And everybody that, and I'm not, I'm not against any neighbors, but they all moved there knowing there was a business there. I'm sorry, but they did. All right? And I know that it may affect them, I don't, if we're putting restrictions on it, that it has to be 10 feet further, I don't know how close to 250 feet it is. And again, I don't know how bright the sign will be, but my concern is, this business has been here for at least 40 years, that I know of. And people have moved in, it was Perry's poultry farm at the time. And I, I, you know, and, and it was almost commercial, because you had the poultry farm, you had the Bel Air, and then what else was going to come in? And, and I, I, I recognize it as being there, just like a lot of other businesses that have been here and people have moved in and didn't want it there. You know, I, and unfortunately, they're the grandfather. They were here much, much before, probably any of the neighbors were.
All right, let's-
And I don't, I don't want to defy that, but I'm just saying that it's pretty difficult to tell a business that they can't promote their business and, and, and try to, try to keep it secure and try to keep it going because of a sign.
Well, the, the, my comments to that would be, if you recall their, our first meeting, Mr. Lennox told how well the business is doing. It's not like that he hasn't been promoting it, they've gotten a lot of awards, and they've been doing very well, according to what he said. So, um...
They don't want, they, they have to keep that motion, they have to keep that in motion. You know, you can't be stagnant, you gotta keep everything, being a business, you gotta keep it in motion, but anyway, I'm done.
All right, let's, if, if there's no, nothing further, all in favor? All right? Against?
Aye, aye.
Motion fails, 3-2.
So we need another motion.
Oh, you-
You need a, you need a motion to pass, right?
Denied.
Right, you need a motion to deny. Or some other motion.
I'll make a mo, a motion to deny the application for the reason that it doesn't meet the hardship criteria, as I explained earlier, about the fair and substantial relationship that exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and also the reasonable use.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Denied, 3-2. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, members of the board. Enjoy the holidays.
We really gotta pick it up, make sure we get through the rest of the items, we still have a lot on the agenda.
For those who are here for other things, going to take a quick five-minute recess, we'll return at 9:10 and go through the rest of the agenda. Thank you very much. Until the little red light in the room goes on.
Wake me up, I'm sure.
This is the collapsed porch, right?
Okay, welcome back to the Gulfstown Zoning Board of Appeals for December 3, 2013. We'll move on to the next public hearing on the agenda, which is an application by Catherine McDonald, applicant owner, seeking variances to rebuild a previously existing collapsed porch in the same location as it existed previously. The variance are needed, variances are needed as the porch will be constructed 16 feet from the front property line, whereas a 25-foot setback is required per section 4.3 of the Gulfstown zoning ordinance. The variance is also required as the porch encroaches 10 feet into the inner 50 feet of the required 100 feet wetland surface water conservation district buffer per section 13 dot 3 dot 3 dot 4 and 13 dot 3 dot 5 dot 2 of the Gulfstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 218 Elm Street, map 36, lot 14, in the residential's one zone. Ms. McDonald, I presume, welcome.
Yes, hello. Good evening, our morning. I'm gonna let Neil do the talking, but I just wanted to denote that I did get ahold of DES, and I did file the notification, and they contacted me after I went through those hoops, and they said I don't need it. They, I have all the signed paperwork from them, that it's not required on their part, just so that you know I went down that road.
Okay.
And then Neil can carry on.
Just identify yourself.
Yes, my name's Neil McDonald. You've said at FORD's, basically, I mean, please is aboard, we are simply looking to rebuild in kind a pre-existing enclosed porch that collapsed due to rot. As my wife said, we submitted the shoreline notification, which was deemed not necessary, and we put all permits to yourself, and Mr. Rose has been out at our property to see the area in question for our proposed rebuild.
Question?
Short, sweet.
It won't take you an hour to present it?
No, no. It's past my bedtime.
I transferred the minutes to the conservation commission meeting, and, and I think it's also in our package as well, and the conservation commission had no, no issues with it.
Yes, correct.
You're, you're strictly seeking to rebuild within the exact-
Rebuild what was-
Same footprint, no changes.
Yeah.
Same windows, same door.
All right, anything from members of the board? Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
You're gonna have a higher ceiling this time?
I gotta put a little sweet accent in.
It looked kinda low when I was looking at the photographs.
Very low.
Thank you very much. Now, the tax card says 7 by 15.
No, it's a 16 by 8, I believe. I mean, that's the piece on the paperwork that I have and measurements that we took, that could very well be the inside, you know, once the walls are constructed. You know, I don't know where they got the, that footprint from, but it's not, it wasn't the exterior footprint, that's a 16 by 8.
Okay.
But I'm guessing it's maybe something to do with the wall, the walls.
You gave us a copy of the tax card, right? How do you do?
It should be on, yeah, they had printed that.
15 by 7 on the tax card. Okay. But they're asking for 16 by 8, so we need to-
It's an error by the assessing department, too.
Could be?
It could be an error by the assessing department.
Okay, all right. Again, we're, we're talking about replacement on same footprint and the same foundation.
Yeah.
Is there a foundation there, or is it, was on post, or? It didn't look like there was, it didn't look like there was much foundation there.
There was no foundation, and there's no foundation there, at all.
No, he, he had it on concrete bricks.
Yes, and submitted together.
Yeah.
Yes, we're gonna do sonotubes.
Okay.
It's an old house.
Oh, I've watched it change appearances over the years on several occasions. Anything further from that, Alan?
No. I'm very familiar with that house.
All right, hearing nothing, thank you very much, folks. We'll call you back if there's any questions from any of butters.
Okay, there's none here. Oh, Dottie is, but she's not like me.
All right.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. I just have to ask formally, are there any butters here who wish to be heard? I just have to ask formally, are there any butters here who wish to be heard on the question? Are there any other interested members of the general public, anyone who wants to be heard? Right, seeing none, thank you very much, folks. I'll declare the public hearing closed. We must, we must, Gail is always the reminder, regional impact.
Regional impact, well, we can...
I make a motion as a regional impact.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, I...
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We're all fighting over it.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Well, yeah, you know, I always have something to say.
Not tonight.
Speaker? It's a porch now. Is there any instance where it has to remain a porch? Once it's rebuilt, they can use it for any purpose they want. I want them to understand that, right? They could use it for bedroom if they wanted to, after it's rebuilt. Because the application says rebuilding an existing porch.
Yeah.
So I don't want any restrictions on their use of that.
Was it just a porch or was it enclosed?
It was, it was enclosed over time.
Yeah, if they wanna put a living room, a site, bedroom, bathroom.
I'd like to make sure that their use of it is not changed, that their ability to use it for whatever they want.
Whatever they presented.
No, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I want them to be allowed to use it for whatever purpose they want to.
They can, the building department's gonna be there.
No, that's not what you just said.
The application, the application is approved as presented, as just as a porch, what they said. It's in kind, they're replacing what they had in kind.
There's no restriction on use. Whatever they choose to use it for in the future will depend on, I guess, on what it's for and if it requires zoning approval, planning board approval or whatever. But there's no limits, no restrictions in the motion.
I would just offer that if the proposed use is to be livable space, they would just wanna make sure to meet whatever building code requirements they need to meet. And if it's an already enclosed space, such as an enclosed porch, then it wouldn't have any need to come back to this board for a variance, so.
Okay.
That would be...
With the building, with the building department, they're gonna be taking care of that.
Right.
I just don't want them to be restricted on their use of it.
That would be through the building permit process.
My wife is still lets me go home. I'm done, I'm done. Okay, we have a motion made by Vivian, second in. Athie, to approve as presented, all in favor? All right, opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, mate. Thanks for helping Brian.
Okay, the next one is...
Okay, the next one is the rehearing. Next item on the agenda is a rehearing on a previously denied application. Mike Gallo, applicant, and Harvey J. Dupuy Family Trust owners are seeking a special exception to build a single-family home on an existing non-conforming lot that does not meet the minimum frontage requirements. Section 14 dot 7 dot 3 of the Gulfstown zoning ordinance states that development of a non-conforming lot may be allowed by special exception if it can meet the conditions of that section. The property is located on Danas Park Road, map 36 dash 1 dash 1, in the residential 1 district. We have someone here appearing for the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Neil Smith. The prior applicant is no longer an applicant in this. Mike Gallo has, was a prospective buyer of this property and he has backed out of the agreement. And my wife, Jacqueline, is the trustee of the Harvey Dupuy Family Trust. She's asked us, she's asked me to speak on her behalf. I just handed a letter to Brian indicating that she's allowing me to speak on her behalf. The reason why we're asking for a rehearing, the applicant was rather frivolous in his submission. And with a little bit more investigation, we found that there was a septic system plan approved by the state of New Hampshire on record here at the town hall. I know one of the, one of the questions that was a problem for the board was whether the lot was buildable enough. And I think that buildability was related directly to whether it could sustain a septic system. And it, no, this is, this is a dated system. It was approved back in 1991, would have to be revised. It may or may not pass by today's regulations. However, it at least, I think, should look, we should look again and maybe do a little bit of soil mapping, engineering, surveying, so forth. The other question you had, or the other reason for denial was lack of frontage. And lack of frontage was, it's kind of a given on this lot. It was approved as a subdivision back in 1985 by the, by the planning board. It met all conditions apparently at that point. So to me, it's a moot point. So I believe that your decision to deny this was unreasonable. And that's why I'm asking for this rehearing. Now, if, if in fact the lot is as bad as it's implied, you can rest assured that you're gonna hear we bought it again because we're gonna have to go, we're gonna have to get a septic system plan, we're gonna have to get wetlands crossings. If we're too close to wetlands, we're gonna have to come back here even perhaps for variances. So until we know everything, which we don't right now, you still will be part of this decision.
I noticed from looking at the GIS that there's some serious wetlands on it. Not serious, but there's wetlands on this site. And then, am I correcting that the, one of the bordering sites is the rail trail?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out which came first.
The rail trails?
When you're talking about this subdivision, was it when they subdivided these three lots off of here?
No.
It's when they divided this lot from that lot?
I have a copy of that original subdivision.
Ah, great, I was hoping you might have one.
Unfortunately, it's not a certified copy, no registry deeds. However, it is, it is dated and it's also got the recording number. And it's highlighted.
So there were actually, were three houses out here at the beginning?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
And that is the subdivision plan that was approved by our planning board, I think. Does that have a planning board signature on it?
It does, but it doesn't have a date of that signature. It had to have occurred sometime between July of 1985 and when it was recorded in October because the last revision on the plan was in July and it was recorded in October of 85.
Do you remember that, Alan? I was there in the building department when they did it.
You're older than I am.
I'll admit it, I'll admit it.
Never let the truth interfere with a good story.
Ah, I guess. Okay, I'm alive. I recognize a couple of names on that.
Diane Sterling, she was the planner. Did you know that? Unpaid planner.
That was before we could afford it. No, this is fine. I was just trying to find out which came first.
No, I believe, I believe you also have...
I was gonna blame the planning board for allowing them to divide off those three lots on the front.
Did anybody else wanna see this plan?
No.
And I believe you may have copies of the septic system plan that was approved. I do have photocopy of sections of it plus the approval letter from the state, if you're interested in seeing that.
So, and you're asking us to approve this?
Allow a special exception, yes.
And then you will have to do all your engineering and...
Yes, absolutely.
And you could fail on any one of those points.
That's right.
That's right.
But I'm wondering if there's any other current ordinance in town that's gonna affect this? A wetland setback?
Wetland setback would not affect it because of the date of the subdivision. The date of the subdivision is prior to when the wetland setbacks came into play. And so when, prior to, it's, I think it's 1993. Any subdivisions that occurred prior to that, lots with those, with the dates prior to that...
They don't have to comply with it.
Don't have to do a wetland setback at all. There's zero wetland setback.
But they still have...
Unless it's a surface water. If there's a surface water, you know, deemed to be a surface water by our flood USGS maps, then it's considered, that trumps it and the dates don't matter. And, you know, as of about five years ago, when that ordinance went into play, you know, all surface waters in town have a 100-foot setback. But this is not a surface water, it's just a wetland based on the USGS maps.
Correct. All right, so I think that the, there's still the...
I think at the time when there was no road frontage, wasn't it that as you get into the lot, if it came into a wider, that would be considered the frontage of the lot? That's 1985 now, '86, but I think that's why they have a, they have a... Your house had to be placed at, say the lot had to be 100 feet. Your lot, your house had to be placed, whether this lot went like this, had to be placed at 100 feet frontage.
Or wherever it was placed on the lot, there had to be 100 foot across the site, something like that, yeah, okay. Now, are we, are we here to, we're here to conduct a rehearing, which would be to reconsider the vote from the prior hearing?
Yeah, it's already been decided.
To allow a special exception to, for this to be done.
It's already been decided to rehear it, so we're already, this is...
This is the rehearing.
This is the rehearing.
Okay.
But because it's a new applicant, is it still considered a rehearing?
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't have a real problem with that. The trust was also a party, I believe, to the original...
Yeah.
...application.
Still represents the Dupuy trust.
Anything further for the applicant? Very nothing, thank you, Mr. Dupuy.
May I ask you one question, however?
Certainly.
The prior applicant asked for this special exception based on a house being 30 by 36 in a sketched-in location on a block plan?
Yes.
We tied into that because at this point in time, we have no buyer. We just, we just can't allow, or if, you know, knowing disinformation, we can't, we can't just accept this denial without a fight. And, but are we locked into a 30 by 36 house on that lot?
Well, you were denied for that application anyway, so I...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if this is a, this is a de novo...
This is a whole new hearing.
This is a whole new hearing.
So it starts over?
Okay.
New information?
Yes, new information, correct.
And Brian might correct me if I'm wrong. I think the placement of the building envelope would be both subject to the wetlands issues and to planning board's site review for the exact location of a building envelope?
Yeah, I mean, the, you still can't put it right in the wetland. But, you know, outside that, you know, based on the rules that I'm, I'm understanding, obviously, if I had better, a better map of the subdivision that showed exactly where the wetlands, I would know much easier what to tell them about, you know, how much developable land there may be or may not be. But, so discussing size of a house right now is kind of irrelevant, almost, yeah.
That's fine, I just don't wanna be locked into a 30 by 36 house that was depicted on the prior submission. That's, because as you say, it's just gonna be dependent on what the lot can handle.
Right.
And if it's, if it's possible even.
Yeah, because they're gonna have to design a new septic system.
Absolutely.
Which will require topography, you'll have to identify wetlands. And you know who has these drawings of John Hills, don't you?
Yes, I do, Joe Wicker.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we do have some downstairs, too, all in cylinders. The original, what's that, planning board, Google.
I think we have it upstairs.
Do you have it upstairs now? Do they have a vault anymore?
Yeah, the Mylars are upstairs.
No, these are put in cylinders and then the square blocks, they put them in the vaults.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Dupuy.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any butters to this property who wish to be heard on it? Please come forward and identify yourself. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is William Hart, 47 Danas Park Road. If I recall correctly, the original reason why this was denied by this board was because it was an unbuildable lot because of the wetlands. And that was taken on the recommendation by the conservation commission. That was the original reason. It had nothing to do with the septic system, had nothing to do with the site plan. It had to do with just the wetlands, period. That's the first reason. The second thing that I wanna bring up is, it's already been said tonight, if there are standing waters or water that's sitting up, the driveway plan and everything that is set up for this goes right through standing water. I have satellite pictures of it and can show it to you very easily. If anyone would like to see it.
When I say service, you mean the surface water?
Surface water, yep.
There's a, on our, in our ordinance, there's a definition of what is considered a surface water.
Mm-hmm.
So not just a wetland with standing water, that's not necessarily the full...
Surface water.
It's, it's more like streams and the rivers and lakes and things like that that are in the town.
Things that would move.
Bigger ponds, that kind of stuff. But what the definition is, is... Figures. For a specific definition. Carry on and I'll find it.
Okay. So I would ask the board to stick with their original decision. Tonight, I've heard through two of these decisions already, how they impact the neighbors. Moving or filling in of this area because it is a movable wetland, because it does rise and fall according to the times of year, would have a great impact if there was some of that area taken away for that water to flow to. This driveway that's supposed to go in is going to go through the entrance to and into a retaining pond where this water flows into at the high points. This water sits up higher than three or four of the abutting properties that would be around it and would have a great impact if that water had no place to go. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. House, the location of your house is further downstream or is it this lot?
No, that's mine, right there, Alan.
So he has the house that's on this property right here. So he's an immediate butter to this proposed lot. So he's an immediate butter to this proposed lot. Okay. And you're saying that the drainage comes down through the site and...
So here is my house.
Yeah.
Here is the road frontage that they're talking about using, and they want to come up and build in here. This, see this inlet right here?
Yeah.
That's the end of my property.
Okay, all right. So this here is surface water?
That's, that pond is about four and a half to five feet deep and it stays within two to three feet deep all the way through here.
Okay.
Anyone else like to see it?
And you have to cross that to get to it?
Yes, you do.
I think you should all see this.
So this is my house. This is it proposed through here and up into this area. This is where my property line ends, right where this jut in.
So it comes down that way?
They're going to have to come in right here. See, this is, this pond is in my property. So they'd have to come in right through here and up in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Mineos, frontage. This pond is a retaining pond.
This house is here?
Yep. This is the retaining pond here. And this all flows from right here, down in through here and down into this. This is all surface water. Or water that sits up above and it gets anywhere between two to four feet deep. And their proposed driveway comes through here. Up there, just jut in is the end of my property line, so their house would be somewhere in this area.
In matching, this is what we're talking about, this dog leg that's around here.
Exactly, yep, that's ready.
The wetlands crossing.
But that doesn't mean...
This is all here and then probably again here, because this is my property line, so the driveway's going to have to be a setback anyways, right?
I suspect that drainage has existed for a while. Thank you very much.
I did find that definition of the surface waters. So this is section thirteen point three point ten point two, surface waters. And this is under a section of...
Thirteen point three point ten?
Thirteen three ten two.
Thank you.
This is under section thirteen point three point ten, which is wetland surface water conservation, conservation district definitions. And it defines a surface water as any river or stream as depicted by a blue line or broken blue line on the most current version of the seven point five minute USGS topographic map in any great pond as defined by RSA two seventy-one twenty. This is a different thing than just a wetland, even though it may have water visible on the top, on the, on the, on the ground. Wetlands are defined right below that. It says those areas that are inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that, under normal conditions, do support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. So the surface waters part about, you know, what the setbacks are for surface waters in town, refer only to that first one that I spoke of. It's a river, a stream or a great pond.
Okay.
So, anyway. In this case, because the, the subdivision happened prior to March ninth, nineteen ninety-three, is the first date this was enacted, it wouldn't have a setback requirement.
Okay, I'll ask questions later.
Okay. Also, if I can just point out to the point of, in the driveway area where there's maybe a little bit more prevalence of wetland, as long as the applicant can get an approval from New Hampshire DES for a wetland permit to cross those wetlands, however it may be that they get that approval, they, they can get that approval through the state and be able to cross them with a bridge or, you know, a culvert or however they propose that they cross them and in fact, you know, with whatever impacts the state is okay with. As long as the state says, "Yeah, we're good with you doing this and this and this", you can put your culvert in or you can put a bridge over this or however you need to do it.
Okay. All right. All right. So, okay.
Nothing else?
I'm all set for it. Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other butter who wishes to speak on this proposal? Is there any interested parties or members of the public that wish to speak on it? Seeing none, I'll declare the public here. Mr. Dupree, you wish to respond?
If you may.
Please come forward.
And my name is Neil Smith.
Pardon me, representing the Dupree Trust. My, my apologies, sir.
The only other point I'd like to make is the fact that this is the only frontage, this is the only means of access to this particular piece of property. It's, it's just sixty feet of frontage. That's all there is. We do realize that there is a wetlands that we have to cross. We do also understand that in an application that we get, or we make for that wetlands crossing, it's going to have to be at a point where it's going to be the least detrimental to that wetlands. And, and that goes on the presumption that, that the lot will even sustain a building, which is something we still have to prove. We have to map the wetlands. We have to do the topography, design a septic system. If, if the lot cannot maintain it, there's no point in pursuing a wetlands crossing. So again, this isn't the last we've heard of this. It's, it's going to take a while for an approval, if approval ever comes. This is just the first step. We're only asking for what we presumed was purchased when the lot was, was bought back in nineteen ninety-three, that it was a building lot of record and that it could be built upon. We just want the opportunity to determine that, yes or no. That's why we request a special exception. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. And before we move into deliberations, I won't forget this time and we'll entertain a motion on regional impact.
I'll so move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Unanimous?
Is that a motion for no regional impact? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
The customary motion that it has no regional impact.
Please double check it.
All right, discussion?
Seeing that it's a lot of record, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And the gentleman will have to know that, to meet with you before he even comes to this board again for the engineering, the work and everything that has to be done so in conservation. So we don't have, if he needs to be in conservation, I'm not sure. But to make sure that when he does come, that he doesn't have to go back and, you know what I'm saying? We want everything right there, boom, 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 and can he or can't he build?
As far as I can see, he doesn't have to come back here if, if, if his vote is positive.
Not back here, but back to the departments and that kind of thing.
Yeah, he'll have to go back to the planning, yes.
Yeah, planning, zoning.
And probably engineering for, you know, septic design and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because Mike reviews those, right?
Year ago.
Yeah. All right.
Further discussion? Only, was the motion made per the conditions of a special exception? Noting that four, is it four?
There are five criteria on...
Of the five criteria for a special exception?
Do you want me to go through that?
No, just add that to the motion.
Yes.
Just to approve the special exception as presented, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
That was made by Vivian and...
Seconded by him.
Seconded by Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is New Wave Electric applicant is appealing an administrative decision that off-site business signage at two properties is not allowed per sections six dot two, six dot four, six dot four dot one and six dot four dot eleven of the Gulfstown zoning ordinance. The property locations are one twenty-nine South Mask Street, Hazel Woods Family Trust property owners, map thirty, lot seventy, zoned commercial. And the other property is one sixty-seven North Mask Street, Philip and Jenny Bowdoin property owners, map seven, lot four, zoned residential one. You folks are, yes, Alan? I happen to know the applicant. He has done work at my office building as an electrician last summer for the association. I'm the treasurer of the association, so I'm the one that wrote the checks to him. I don't feel that I have any bias or whatever, but if the board wishes, I'll step down.
Are you a good friend of his?
No.
Okay, so I don't...
Well, I should, that's bad thing. That's a bad thing to ask.
Are you, you know, friends?
No.
Go out to dinner?
Absolutely not.
I don't, I don't mind.
He's worked for me once. He was introduced to me by another owner in the building. All right, if you feel it opposes no conflict in deliberations and, you know... I do not. Other board members?
I just know him by recycle precautions.
Don't hold that against us.
I've actually done work for your house to Vivian.
It is a, it is a small town, we all know. All right, thank you very much. Representing the applicant, you are?
I'm Resheah, Resheah Spencer. I am co-owner with Michael of New Wave Electric.
Could you spell your first name?
R-E-S-H-E-A. And I'm just here to oppose the decision by Mr. Rose that we have utility trailers in there. He's saying they're signs. I'm opposing that, saying they're not. They're utility trailers. And by the very definition of sign, it's, you can read it, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have it in my copy, but it states that it's for anything that's bringing business to that location. That's, we don't even own those locations. So we're not attracting business to that location.
So this is new to me. So could somebody explain to me what a...
Executive decision.
Yes, let it leave.
An appeal administrative decision is allowed by statute. And it's a decision that I, as the planning and zoning administrator, make when enforcing the zoning ordinance. And, you know, if I make a determination that someone is in violation of a zoning ordinance, they have the right to appeal that determination by coming to this board and stating their reasons why they feel my determination was illegal or unreasonable or whatever.
Does this was brought to your attention?
Yes.
Can I ask Michael a question? Are these, that plate's on them?
Yes, they're registered in the state of New Hampshire. Their, their equipment, they got, they carry generators and they carry construction equipment. The one at Phil Bowdoin's house, he worked for us part-time, so he was moving generators for us and had it stored out front.
Is that the one?
He moved it out to the side of the building.
Before the water works?
Yeah, he moved it to the side of the building.
Yeah, I went by there this afternoon and moved it, so.
Right. And I feel that he doesn't have to move it. He can park it anywhere he wants on his property. It's his property. And I had expressed that to Mr. Rose and he...
That is registered also?
Yes.
Yes, they're all registered vehicles.
And he had explained to me that basically any sign, any advertisement on the side of a trailer is a sign to him. A U-Haul, if it has Skidoo on it, if it has Harley-Davidson, Articat, whatever, he had expressed to me that that was a sign. I don't, I don't agree.
So Brian, you noticed this from driving by. Did anybody call and complain about it?
I had received one complaint about it.
From?
From competition.
Was it from a butter?
No, it was, it was not from a butter.
It was from another electrician in town or?
No.
Because you told me it was.
Well, there, there had been a complaint about signs from your company, but not specifically in this location.
Right, and...
From that person.
The two small signs that we did have, we took down quite a while back.
Yeah.
But I can't remove the lettering off of my utility trailers. It's, it's part of the trailer.
Okay.
These, 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 these are considered registered vehicles or registered roadworthy. All right. And I have to recall, I don't know if it's ten or fifteen years ago, Jutrisign had a truck parked there. There was some advertising on the truck. The building inspector went there to tell him he had to move it. And he said, "I don't have to move it. I'm parking my truck here and this is where it is. I am not, I don't have a sign. I have just a truck." And I'm, and this, and there was, I don't think it was enforceable, to tell you the truth, because that truck stayed there. If it's a registered vehicle, I don't think it's, every, I mean, I have a vehicle that's got a bunch of signs on it, too, you know. I, I don't see where it's enforceable, because he can move it wherever he wants. He can park it wherever he wants.
I've also seen this happen in other towns, in other cities, where somebody will have a truck with their name on it and they, when they go, when they drive to a location, because they can drive it wherever they want, they can drive it on the weekends or whatever, they park it very strategically near the road. So be it. I, I mean, they're entitled to do that. And I think this is one of those areas where, would I say that that's a sign? Yeah, it's, it's informing you of something. But is it reasonable to say it shouldn't be there? Well, that's different, because...
It's a registered vehicle.
But it's also mobile, stationary.
Right, right. That's, that's what I mean, yeah.
It was just a...
I mean, if you put a billboard, if you, if you installed a permit, that's, that's a different thing.
If I may, the, the sections of the letter that I wrote, the reasons for making the determination, they go through each section and they very clearly demarcate language in our ordinance that prohibits this type of sign. Signs on a trailer is listed specifically. Signs that are on wheels or, or are otherwise movable.
Do you have the definition of a trailer? Sorry.
I'll get to that in a second. And also, if you look, I'm going to open up my letter here. If you look at section six point four point... Six point four point, six point four, it prohibits all signs not expressly authorized. So if, if there hasn't been a specifically authorized sign by our ordinance, then it's prohibited. And then further down, it, in section six point four point one prohibits billboards, which is an off-site sign. And if you look up the definition of billboard in our ordinance... And if you look up the definition of billboard in our ordinance, you'll, you'll see that, you know, it's a, it's a sign on another property. I can read it. "A sign that identifies or communicates a commercial or non-commercial message related to an activity conducted, a service rendered, or a commodity sold at a location other than where the sign is located." So this, this, this sign could be considered a billboard. It's, it's an off-site sign.
I, I have just one question of the applicant. What do you hope to have, to gain by having those trailers there?
Well, first of all, the one, the one at the commercial site, the guy, he takes care of all of our trucks and all our trailers, so he allows me to leave it there. So he maintains the vehicles. In exchange, I'm allowed to leave more trucks there.
Trailers.
That's truck or trailers, whatever I want to leave there.
Okay, but you don't hope to gain anything by having a trailer?
We don't have room in our driveway, first of all, to store a trailer, two trailers. We don't, we just don't have a room. We have four people that live with us.
I know, I went by. I know you don't have room.
We got the office street by November fifteenth, April, and it's, that's a struggle in itself.
And in the Bowden situation, he uses the trailer for the church, he uses the trailer for moving motorcycles and whatnot, in exchange, he helps me with generators. So he leaves a trailer there. So it's...
Anything in the trailer?
Not right now.
Could be.
And so with the trailer being there, do you hope to gain any customers by saying it's an advertisement?
No.
It's a place to store, where they choose to store it on their property. I have no say on that.
It's your trailer.
Yeah, well, it's their property.
Don't tell me you don't have control of your trailer.
It's their property.
But I can ask. I can move it to the areas that they'll allow me to move it to.
And I have something else that I need to ask. It has nothing to do with what Brian's, and it's the definitions of... I just, you have, Brian, I need to have you explain something to me. It has something to do with... It has something to do with storage containers. Storage containers, truck trailers, shipping containers, other similar containers are defined as structures. And a structure is anything constructed or erected which requires a location of the ground, attached to something, have a location in the ground. But if it's a, it's, it's a structure, then that's a sign.
But it's on wheels.
No. Says truck trailers is considered a storage container. And a, and a structure, storage container is considered a structure by the ordinance. I just want you to understand that.
A utility trailer would be different.
But he's not, these are not storage trailers.
No.
You're talking...
We use these daily for moving generators.
Huge storage trailers. That's what you're talking.
I, I kind of also like to move to the definition section as well, and we can talk about the definition of sign. I actually called and asked our attorney how to interpret it, how to interpret this definition. I just want to read it first. So the definition of sign in our ordinance says, "Any device that is sufficiently visible to persons not located on the lot where such a device is located and designed to attract the attention of such persons or communicate information to them about products, accommodations, services, or activities on the lot where the device is located." So I think what...
Resheah.
Ms. Spencer, yes, brought up is the, the last part about activities on the lot where the, the device is located. And her application of that is applying it to the entire definition. I think it's the opposite. I think you apply it to the activities on the lot where the device is located by itself, but that a sign would be a device that communicates information about products, accommodations, and services. And it doesn't matter what location you're talking about. It's communicating about products...
It doesn't say that.
...accommodations and services or activities on the lot where that device is located.
But it doesn't specifically say. Doesn't matter where the services is located.
It, it doesn't say that, but you...
It's an interpretation.
You interpret one way or you interpret the other way.
But I'm still lost on it being a sign. I, I, it's a utility trailer. There's hundreds and thousands of businesses that have lettered trailers in their yards.
Well, I was going to ask a question about that. If, if there's a construction project going on in town, and I know, I mean, we, we letter the construction trailers for a lot of general contractors, Pro-Con Harvey, whoever, and they set up their trailer and, I mean, I'll, I'll be candid. They come to us to decorate the trailers with their, their name on it for a specific reason. So the trailer is at the construction site two, three, four, six months. Is that looked at? I mean, are you going, is, is that the strict definition of a sign and are they going to be, you know, in that same situation where they don't own the property?
Our, our...
I would have, I would have to more fully evaluate that in order to answer the question, but...
I mean, that's the only thing I'm thinking about where there's the, there's the strict definition, and then there's the, kind of the practical sense.
Well, I have a, my car, not my car, but the, the company car is parked in my driveway all the time, happy, hell, whatever, you know. It tells everything we do. It's parked there. Am I going to say it's a sign? It's a sign on my car, and it's helping out my business. You're darn right it is, you know. It has to. And that's why everybody puts something on their car and on their truck and on their trailer.
You, you drive around town and probably more than half of the vehicles have something on them.
And my, yeah, my husband's got the truck. He parks it in his yard. That isn't where his business is, his truck. His business is Massachusetts, but it's right in the yard.
Believe me, I struggled with this as I wrote the letter.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I honestly felt in this scenario that these trailers were not just being parked on the lot because they're a car that someone drives home and has to park in the driveway, but they were placed, you know, specifically in locations where they were, you know, visible to be an advertisement instead of, you know, parking it in, at, at a home. I mean, I, I know where this person lives, and I know it's not in a location where it's a very visible place to lots of people as they're driving by.
And they also don't have the room in the driveway.
So I, I can, I can understand why they would want to put their trailer in a location where it would be visible. And I, I had that statement made to me that, you know, during, during this time of, you know, economic difficulty, you do what you can to be able to get people to, you know, to your business.
No, that would, that's incorrect. That is incorrect.
Ms. Spencer's...
Please, please, the grace of God, excuse me. Through the chair, please.
That's an incorrect statement.
Anyway, far be it that this gentleman has a friend that he does business with in a visible place where people travel all the time, and he says, "Listen, if I can park my trailer here, let's do business together." Bottom, one hand washes the other. Far be it by this poor guy, because he's on Mass Road and he's very visible, that he can't be there. Where else is he going to go? Who else does he know in town that he can park his trailer?
And that's a commercial site over there. That's not even residential over at the Accelerated Auto.
Right. I'm just thinking of, you know, if he knew a friend may be on the back road someplace or behind some house and hide it, you know.
The two questions...
But what's the value?
Two questions I...
There's no value to doing that, though.
Yes.
Two questions I have here. One is a very, it's obviously a very strategic location and an end of the property where you're hitting all the traffic inbound from Manchester. Two, how often is this trailer, to me, how often the trailer is moved? Is this a vehicle that is used regularly, like say you're...
It's moved often. It's, I go, it's moved often.
The one over here has got, it does new construction, it's completely loaded with equipment. So every time we wire a house or a generator, it has to go to that job site.
But between, but between that time, it can sit sometimes for several weeks, say, between jobs?
It could, depending on how busy we are. Or it could be out every day. It was out at the Seacoast for half the summer.
And I do understand Brian's struggle. This has always been a struggle with it. People advertise on their vehicles. And it's great.
But you're also going to...
My problem is I've got a statement in the ordinance that says no signs mounted on trailers. That's a pretty...
It's not mounted on the trailer.
It's not mounted on the trailer.
Painted.
Mounted or painted, to me, that's the same thing.
Well, something mounted, you can, you can take it off.
Put onto the trailer.
But if you had a panel on a trailer, mounted on a trailer, you could take it off.
Yeah.
If you put, you know, pressure-sensitive film, it's, if you take it off, it's, it's ruined, you know. You can't...
Are you saying that, say, for instance, I have one of those trailer-mounted signs with a, with a logo or a changing signboard, you know, with lights and whatever, computer-driven, that would can be considered something I could not do, right? Is that, is that...
Would you ever fix it?
Lights on the trailer?
Yeah.
Well, no, not the lights themselves, but the messages in lights on the trailer, like you, like you see on Mass Road. There's a big orange one in there on Mass Road.
Oh, oh, like the ones DOT uses?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Now I betcha.
Is that what that section refers to? It's like you can rent those things, so those would be illegal here unless it's on your property?
There's a different ordinance for those.
I don't know. I just...
I'm, I'm...
I don't want to park my truck out there.
I mean, I can, I can see, I can see, you know, when Brian said he struggled with it, but to me...
I mean, where would you stop the line? I mean, with U-Haul, Skidoo, Articat, everybody's got signs all over their trailers.
Everybody does it, and some find a strategic spot, or some find a lucky spot, or some find an available...
MTC Builders is right across from Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is something I think...
Same thing, same exact thing.
Yeah.
What was that?
MTC Builders. They're the same, they have the same kind of trailer parked right across from Cumberland Farms as you're going around the turn. It's right there on the right.
If you really want to ride around town, they're everywhere.
Everywhere.
Well, and that's, there are a lot of illegal signs around town. I...
I mean, I think if it was parked there...
It doesn't condone it.
And it never moved, and it wasn't registered, and it wasn't inspected, I mean...
It's insured, registered.
You know, that would put a new spin on it, but...
Well, that's why I asked if it was registered.
Yeah.
And insured.
Yeah.
If I can offer one too, it seems to me when Planet Fitness opened their location in Gulfstown Plaza, there was a truck with Planet, Planet Fitness parked out on the side of Mass Road for quite some time.
So I got another question for you. So say I buy another truck. I'm going to buy a great big twenty-foot trailer truck with a motor on it, and I'm going to bring it down and accelerate it, and then he's going to take and redo that truck. It's going to take him a year, and it's going to sit in his front yard. That's not illegal. He's doing work for me. He's doing it daily. I mean, it, where do you draw the line on something like that? It just gets, it gets crazy.
And you said that we use that one on the personal property residential as a sign. Well, if you recall, there's a picture. We have a sign in front of it. So if we're using that trailer as a sign, we wouldn't put the little sign there.
Yeah, Phil, Phil stuck a little sign out front. I told him to take it down.
I mean, like this one right here, there was a little sign in front of it, so we're not always, why would I use that and this? That's overkill. It's overkill. But he did, he took that one down.
Honestly, in my opinion, that was just further evidence that it was to be an attraction as a sign.
Well, that, that's where Phil had parked that, that, and, and we asked him, did it get moved back? When you asked me to, I moved it back, had him move it back to the side of his house, which he was reluctant to do because he didn't want it in his driveway. Because he said, "When snow comes, I'm not going to be able to move it." He had it out front last year to keep it out of the way of the snow so he could plow his driveway.
We're not plowing around it to, well, unless to get it out, but not to make it.
And I, I, and I, I think I made this statement to you at the counter that, you know, I'm not in the, interested in, you know, going around town and telling everybody who's got a trailer that they can't park it in their lot. But I, I do feel like, you know, if you're placing it out at the street level, then that turns it into a different issue. If you're parking it further into your driveway and, you know, you're just parking it because that's where you need to park it, that's one thing. But if you're parking it out by the street where it's designed to be, you know, an attraction to, to further your business use, I mean, that's, that's a sign.
You're getting it to a gray area where you're telling people where they can park their stuff on their...
Well, you have a, you also have a, a group of trucks further down. They're probably the place of business, but they're all lined up, and their all names are all on it, and it tells exactly what they do. What are you going to do with them? They don't live there. They park their trucks there.
You mean like you're talking Henry Ridge Road?
That's right. All right, they're all lined up, and they've all got all their advertising.
You mean the, the three trucks have grown to six or seven? Businesses grow.
Well, that's all I'm saying is that, you know...
All right, anything?
The only thing I want to say is that Brian does have ordinances to enforce, and just like a variance or a spec, special exception, if it goes against the ordinance, then we have to uphold his, his decision. If we don't like the ordinances it's written, then the goal would be to change it eventually, but for now, whether you like it or not, we have to go with what's in the ordinance.
But I think he's, he's, Brian's on a fine line, a very fine line, and he's, I think he did the best, what he thought was what had to be done. I'd hate to be in this position right now. I really would. But I don't see where this is pasted on a truck or... It's on a vehicle. It's, it's registered. Why did he register it if he was going to leave it there?
Right.
You know, I, and, you know, I'd hate to, I'd hate to be your code enforcement officer there, Brian, because you'd have to, a lot of work to do. It's true.
What, what, what is the test on this appeal? What is, you know, we have the five tests for a variance, and we have five for special exceptions. What's the test for, for adjudicating this? What's the testing fact? What's the testing, you know, is it in the public?
The only criteria...
What's the criteria?
Do we agree with Brian's interpretation of the zoning ordinance? There's no criteria like a variance or a special exception.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
My, my charge is to interpret the zoning ordinance. If there's a, a point that's unclear or something, I have to make a determination about what it means.
So you interpret, but you also, you also decide the interpretation and the application of the, of the code?
Right.
Okay.
But it's like the Building Board of Appeals. If you don't agree with the building inspector, you can appeal it to the Building Board of Appeals, which we have here in town.
I know.
And, and that's the reason for it, so that...
How often do they meet, Ellen?
Never. I don't know if we've ever had a meeting.
Last one was probably in eighty-one or eighty-two, I think.
Brian, can I ask, when you spoke to the town attorney, did he agree with your interpretation?
Yes. He felt that it was very clear, that there were several points within the ordinance that, that you could rely on. You didn't even have to get into the definition section, really, because of the section six point four and six point four point, or six point, whatever all the other ones are. Six point four point one and six point four point eleven. I mean, there's, there's very clear language there that just says, you know, how, how do you determine, you know, if a sign is on something that's with or without wheels? You know, if it's a vehicle or if it's a trailer, they both have wheels, so that applies to that one. It applies to the trailers. It applies to signs mounted in or on vehicles.
Did the attorney come here and look at it and take a picture, or did he see it, or is this sight unseen?
This is, this is not his interpretation based on seeing the photo. He just interpreted based on the language in the ordinance and, and how to, how to determine if that applies or not.
The language in the ordinance, in the ordinance doesn't specify that if you have a, a running vehicle and your advertising is on it, shame on you. That's a sign.
Read six four eleven. "A-frame signs, tripod mounted..."
That's not an A-frame.
"...with or without wheels, trailers, signs mounted in or on vehicles, or otherwise not permanently affixed to the ground, and permitted as a freestanding sign unless otherwise specifically allowed." That's prohibit, that, that's one of the prohibitions, any one of those kinds of signs.
And.
Is that what you're saying, Brian?
The category of otherwise not permanently affixed to the ground.
Doesn't say registered vehicle or registered. These people, you register it, you're taking it on the road. You're going to another place, you're doing some work, and you're bringing it back to the only place that you possibly can park it. Shame on us if it's a visible place and it's got a good, good visibility, and he can't park it in his yard. And then he's there for four days, and all of a sudden, he's got another job to do, so he takes his trailer, goes to an on-site. And by the way, if he's there six months on-site with his trailer, is there gonna be a code enforcement officer saying, wait a minute, you're advertising, I'm sorry, you're adverti- The guy doesn't leave his trailer there.
I, I actually wouldn't have cited him for being a construction site, because there's a, an exception to a permit requirement for a construction site sign located on the site identifying the project, funding source, owner, developer, architect.
Isn't there a size limit on that?
No.
I don't know.
Really?
No size limit.
I don't know, I, I'm, I think, I'm sorry, but I think this is really, really.
On a, on a site where you actually are taking your stuff and your trailers and whatever, you're doing your work on that site, you know, that, to me, is an exception to the permit requirement. But, you know, at a, at a residential location, or even a commercial location, where you're not doing any work, you're not, you know, there for any other reasons than to maybe have work done on a trailer, which I would argue doesn't have to be done every single day of the year. But, you know, that being said, I don't, I, I don't know if that's, you know, appropriate or not, but even just moving that back off of the road to a location where it's not acting as a sign, I think would satisfy this, this concern of mine, that it's not meeting the requirements of our ordinance.
So, you're gonna tell people where they can park stuff and put stuff on their property? We registered.
That's what this ordinance is saying I'm supposed to do.
If we have to move those vehicles, then so does everybody else in town that has any type of vehicle with signs on it that are, that are sitting out visible by the road. Am I correct?
That's my charge, and I can't obviously enforce everybody at all the same time, but I'm working on it one, one at a time.
Yes.
That's, you can't ask that question.
I understand the interpretation, but I think the application is a real, is a mess. I, I, I just, I think it's a slippery, ugly slope.
All right, well, first, before we do, do we have anything further for the applicant? It sounds to me like we're getting deep into deliberation, and I think we should deliberate and come to a conclusion. Anything further that anyone wants to ask of the applicants? And we wish the.
There is a snowmobile trailer right on Mass Road. Has that, it has sled dock on it, they're gonna have to move that, right? It's, I just want to be clear, it says, snowmobile trailer, and it's got advertising on it, that it will have to be moved.
Once again, I, we have to limit ourselves to the case in front of us here, and I think that, you know, you're asking for speculative things out there. If there's nothing further that the board wishes to ask of the applicants, we'll close, and we will deliberate now.
Thank you.
We actually still do have a couple of cases on the agenda after you.
To close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Did we do the regional impact thing yet?
We don't need a regional.
Okay.
I think this is an appeal of.
Then I'd like to make a.
No region.
No public hearing is no regional impact.
Okay, then I'd like to make a point. It was referenced in here six four eleven, and you have to read, I'm, I'm not an English major, so someone's gotta explain this to me. The first two, the first two words are A-frames, and that's a type of sign. The rest of the sentence is an explanation of how that A-frame sign might be used. Has nothing to do with the trailers that, in my opinion, has nothing to do with the trailers on those, the signs on these trailers that are before us this evening. Because that sentence paragraph only refers to A-frame signs, and this is not an A-frame sign.
I, I don't interpret it the same way, Alan, I'm sorry.
No, but, but A-frame sign, it can be tripod mounted, it can be with or without wheels, it can be on a trailer. It can be mounted on a vehicle. This sentence only refers to A-frame signs, does not apply to this case.
I disagree. I.
That's why we're here.
I think that depends on the way that you parse the sentence and.
That's why there's a comma there.
That's why there's a comma there, I was just gonna say that.
I'm not an English major, but I've been there a few times. I've been corrected more than once.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that section reply, applies only to A-frames.
Well, I do, because you can go A-frames, miss all the corners, not permanently affixed to the ground, and per, and permitted as a freestanding sign unless otherwise specifically allowed. Forget all the commas.
Yeah, forget all the commas.
Get everything out of there. That's how I was taught my English.
Perhaps a semicolon would have been better punctuation there, but I still read that comma as a full break, and I interpret that as trailers in that category. I, like I say, I disagree on the reading of the sentence, so.
I'm just, I'm an instigator, I told you that.
A question that I would have is, how could you interpret A-frames and then comma trailers? Would it be A-frames?
Mounted on a trailer. Tripod mounted, with or without wheels, trailers, with an A-frame on it.
That English.
I've seen them all.
No, I think it's a list of signs, meaning like A-frame signs, tripod mounted signs, with, signs with or without wheels, trailers, signs mounted in or on vehicles, or otherwise not permanently affixed to the ground. I think each one is a type of sign that's listed, I don't think it's just about A-frames.
Well, I think so, but anyway, that's my English, and I was pretty good at English.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right.
What, what, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not for this, getting rid of it. I'm not for it at all, because I've got eleven trailers, eleven car, eleven trucks that have advertising on it, and I hate to think that I'm gonna have to park it on the side of the street at my house for two years, and all of a sudden, I gotta move it because I'm advertising. Lucky for me, I have a garage, all right? And I get the, I get the, I'm in industrial zone. But I want a motion, and I want to make a motion saying, I don't take the appeal. I mean, I, I, the appeal, I, I grant the appeal of the, I don't even know how to make the motion.
Grant the appeal of the applicant.
I grant the appeal of the applicant. I make a motion to grant the appeal of the applicant.
I'll second it.
Now, which, now, we've got a couple of separate issues involved in this, because I think there are two things. We have the piece about the off-site advertising. We also have the erection of the tent shed without a building permit that is a portion of this appeal. I think that.
From my understanding, from my understanding, the letter included that, but the appeal did not include that. And they actually have come forward and already applied for a building permit for the tent shed, so I don't know that that.
All right, so that part, that portion of it is remedied and doesn't need to be addressed.
My thing is regardless of what our opinion is of the situation, whether we have to look to what's in the ordinance. Do we like the ordinance or not? If we don't like the ordinance, they, the, the suggestion would be to change it.
I'm starting to feel sorry for myself, a business person, and I'm getting ruined here. I really feel.
But this one's not about you, this one's not about you right now, this one is about this particular application.
But it is about me, because once they get him off the road, if I park my truck on my side street, on my side street, and I'm in residential zone, and I park it there every night, because I don't wanna park it in my yard, because I don't have the room, I'm gonna be told I gotta move it, or I gotta, I'm, I'm advertising.
I, I, I think it's a different situation.
No, it's not different.
If it's parked at night and moved every day is part of your business, that's a different situation.
Not moved every day. This truck isn't running good, it's, it's registered, but it's not running good. It's got three hundred thousand miles on it, so I wanna park it on my corner lot, because I don't have the room in my garage. So, what am I gonna do?
The, the, interesting observation is six point one, the purpose of the sign regulations. These regulations are intended to maintain and enhance the appearance and aesthetic environment of the town. Now, the aesthetic environment, I don't think either one of those two trailers are, are bad for the aesthetic environment of the town when I look at all the rest. Particularly the village section, they're not in it. They're outside of, the highway corridors leading into town, and they are in both. And we're not talking about pedestrian safety and adverse effects of signs on nearby property in either case. So, if there's a little bit of this and a little bit of that, it might apply as a general thing to the ordinance. I think, I think most of us would like to think that, based upon the appeal and the appearance, that maybe this, this person might find a better location for his signs, or trailers, whichever you might consider them. But I don't think. Six point four point one might apply, because the properties that they're locating on don't relate to the business of the, that's advertised on the vehicle.
Right.
Your vehicles do advertise the, the services or the company at that location. There's a difference.
No, I'm gonna be in a residential area, I'm not gonna be in my industrial zone with my truck. I'm parking it in my residential corner lot.
Oh, you're a bad pain.
I may use it once every three months.
Okay.
Or six months.
All right.
Depending if I have to go to the campground or the ski area.
I understand.
I'm just telling you that.
I know, you're telling me that.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's getting to the point that, you know, Big Brother's watching. And then for, this is, to me, it's appalling, but anyway, that's because.
But they must have changed the zoning ordinance.
That's my opinion.
I do notice, you know, I do notice those signs whenever I go by them, only because I know them. The chances are, in most cases, I wouldn't know them other than I see it if I needed a generator, because that's what they advertise on there. And I don't, I have one, all right? But for the number of people that may not have them, it, it may attract business. I really don't have a problem with attracting a business in some fashion, how else is he gonna do it?
Well, anyway, I said my piece, I don't wanna.
Were you, did you want to make a motion, Vivian, or you were?
He already did, it's been seconded.
Got seconded.
To grant the appeal.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
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 The appeal is granted three two. Thank you very much.
Just a lot of work off your hands, you know that, don't you?
But I, but I do, but I do think, Brian, that there, that somehow that needs to be, the language needs to be improved somehow to.
Something.
To prohibit that, because I don't think the language is specific enough in my interpretation.
See what the other towns do.
I thought it was pretty darn clear, but.
All right.
See what the other towns do, what the other cities do.
My, my experience is in Manchester.
Moving right along, folks.
Yes, okay.
Can I remind the board that we made an amendment to our rule of procedures that we end by eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got two applications left, so.
I will be quiet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving right along, the next application is from Stephanie Amesworth, applicant owner, seeking a special exception to allow the keeping of poultry, four to six ducks in a residential two zone. Special exception is needed because section three dot twelve, table A ten of the Gulf Town zoning ordinance lists the keeping of poultry as a use permitted by special exception. The property is at six Orchard Street, map sixteen, lot eighty-seven, and I'm presuming you're Ms. Amesworth.
I'm Ms. Amesworth, yes.
They're adult ducks.
All right, please tell us what you're looking to do.
Well, I've always had a lot of animals, I guess. I used to live across, actually in Gulf Town, I'm on Lona, across from a cow farm, so I'm used to having a lot of variety of animals. And what I'm looking to do is just actually just kinda expand on what I already have for pets, which are varied. But those ones are in the house, obviously, this one I need to be outside the house. And I just want to have a couple of ducks on my property to add to it, that's really all I'm looking for. If it has to change from four to six to two to three, I don't care, I just wanna have ducks. And if they have eggs, I like to eat eggs, that's really all I'm looking for, nothing complicated.
Okay. Any members of the board, Alan, you look like you have a burning question?
I don't have a burning question, but I know it's behind the bike shop.
Yes.
The bike shop is behind you?
Yes.
How come you decided to put the ducks in the left-hand corner and not behind the bike shop?
First of all, where, if you kinda look at my backyard where everything's located.
Yes.
In that, more in that corner is away from everyone else's house, so it's kinda the central location to be away from the bike shop, which they're not even really out there, except for my dog to bark at us every so often, when they come out to open up the gates to it. Talking about signs, alternative signs, not, not Kelly Street, but not to belabor that. But that just kinda keeps it away from every other area, so it, it just seems to be the nice thing to do to all my neighbors. Like, I have no problem with all my neighbors, they're wonderful.
You got one.
Yeah, I know. I know I have one here, and that's fine, but, that's it.
Is your whole yard fenced in?
The backyard where I would have them, yes.
And what's in the rear that, look for the aerials that I looked at, the rear of the bike shop, they just have storage trailers and.
Yes, yeah, they have one that's moved right now.
Things behind their building.
Yeah, and sometimes you'll have, there's apartments over there, and sometimes you'll hear like whoever lives in the apartments, they'll go outside and do whatever, I never really know, but, again, I have a six-foot fence in the back, so.
Is there tree or brush cover in, it looked like in the area kind of behind where you're proposing the.
Um, that actually, last night checked, there used to be a lot of poison ivy, I'm highly sensitive with poison ivy, but I'm always outside. So, um, last, my fiance actually checked it, is that that all got cleared out this past summer. We were actually trying to get in touch with the bike shop owner to have him clear it out, because poison ivy was growing from underneath and growing under, and into my yard, and over the fence, and all over, so. But they ended up moving it actually anyways, I don't know what happened a year later, we never could quite catch it. So, that moved anyways, and then there is that one tree that's along that corner fence, but that's really it for that point.
Okay, and what would you estimate the distance between these two, looks like nine Libby Street and ten Orchard are your two abutters on that? I, what would you estimate is like the distance to the nearest building from where you're proposing the coop?
Nine Lib-, you mean the bike shop itself, or?
You're talking about the other abutters, not the bike shop, but the nine Libby.
Oh, nine Libby.
Nine Libby and ten Orchard, it would be to the left as we're looking at your house.
Nine Libby, it's, it's really not that close.
Mr. Richards.
Oh, no, that's, no, you're, she's Orchard Street.
Oh, he's Orchard.
Yeah, Libby is behind.
Across the street.
Yeah, he's, if you look up the front, he's the corner. Libby is the next road over, and they, like, our corner just touches, that's about it. And even on the other side, they have, I don't know how many yards back, a few yards back, a separate metal fence where their dog and their pool and everything is, so I, I don't, I still don't, I couldn't tell you who they were if I saw.
Brian and Kathleen Moriarty.
That, actually, looking up the information was the first time I even knew their names, I'll be really honest, I've lived there almost three years. It's really bad. I know my fiance kinda knows them from like balls going over the fence from the kids or whatnot, but that's about it. It's usually because we have to go between the fences to kinda.
You don't have any concern of them getting out of the yard somehow, I'm, you're just two houses up from Mass Road, which is really busy.
And I actually, I figured out how to clip wings, I took a few YouTube trials, but I figured it out. And that stops them from flying, and it has to be done once a year. I think it's the ten first feathers, I could be wrong. I think it's the 10 first feathers, I could be wrong, I have it written down at home. But that prevents them from flying, and I've had a dog that the only time he gets out is because he follows me out the door to, you know, go after the bus or something, because my son's on there and he gets upset. But I don't know.
And you said the rear yard is fully fenced?
Yes. It has only one door in and out, and that's right next to my garage.
All right, anything else for the applicant from other board members? Hearing nothing, thank you very much. We'll hear from the abutters and then deliberate. Are there any abutters who would like to speak?
Charles Richard, 9 Orchard Street, which is across the street.
Okay, you're directly across from Ainsworth.
Yeah. And, I don't know, we're in a residential zone, lots hundred by hundred, and some of them are only sixty by hundred. I do not want a farm starting on a lot that size. I mean, there's enough animals running around now, I don't need ducks to listen to ducks. I mean, you wanna farm, go to, go to the country, get a farm. You're gonna start with ducks, what's gonna be ducks? Goats?
Probably not in an R2 district, I would think.
Well, I mean, no. I've been there longer than anybody else has been there, you know, and why do I have to start listening to that? Would you like a duck farm in your backyard?
Anything, anything...
I think the reason that it's an allowable use, or, we had a article passed that in the residential zone, they could have up to six poultry's, and that's...
When did that pass?
That's not a, that number is...
It didn't say six?
It never was passed that way, right?
No.
Never had a number associated with it. It was always just an accessory use to a principal residential use in the residential one and two zones, and no limit on there, but the special exception process would be the process that you would limit it.
Okay.
And I believe that...
That would be part of a motion. That would be part of a motion if it was to be approved.
But I'm saying right now, that's why, like Mr. Richard says, is why now? I mean, why are they doing it now? Because we have a special exception or variance or whatever that allows it to be...
We have an allowance for poultry in the residential one and two zones.
You gotta be kidding.
By special exception. That's why they're here at this board, to ask for...
We're talking hundred-foot lots here and sixty-foot lots.
They have to, they have to show how they meet the criteria for getting a special exception, and if they can show that to the board, then the board is actually required to approve it. If they can't prove it to the board, then they're supposed to deny it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other abutters who wish to speak on this proposal? Any members of the public? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and deliberate. Make a motion that this has no regional impact. Did we do that yet?
No.
No, thank you, Alan. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
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 Unanimous. So, so 1532 lists the specific criteria for granting a special exception. 1.1 says, "Is an appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan?" I'd have to say yes, and that it has been a topic of discussion, poultry has been a topic of discussion big time for a number of years, and these two sections...
Probably continue to be.
And these, and these two sections were added to the zoning ordinance a few years back to address that problem, where it allowed someone to present the case if they wanted to do something like that in the R1 and the R2 zone, is that correct? Something like that. So I, I find that it's certainly is within the master plan, because it's been discussed, and that's why it's in the zoning ordinance in this fashion.
No, I would agree.
"Size of frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood." She's asking for six ducks, and I think the motion has to say something about six ducks, or however many she wants. I mean, just like you can have six chickens and maybe no roosters, so you don't have to listen to the rooster in the morning, whatever. I, I think in previous cases where we've given special exceptions for poultry, we have set an numerical limit on it, and it would depend, and in this case, if Ms. Ainsworth is suggesting six, I would say that our motion should set it at that and no more. And there's a reason for that. If you have six chickens and you get five eggs a day, that's thirty-five eggs a week. What are you doing? I got four boys, I can't eat thirty-five eggs a week. So I mean, that's, huh?
So... I can, I can say for duck eggs, my stepson has chickens and ducks, and duck eggs, all of us have found that they're for regular eating, you know, like fried eggs, breakfast, whatever, that they're really not all that great. They're good for baking, but...
Omelet?
No, no. Nobody's liked them as a breakfast food that way. Just for baking and stuff, they've been okay, but, so I don't...
I guess if you put it up on him.
But, just my input.
You're not into ducks, I don't blame you.
Not into ducks, and she may find the same, I think, is what I say.
Let's keep moving along, Alan, would you like to continue?
Will it create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles and pedestrians?
No, they're in the backyard, in the fenced enclosure, and...
And the wings are clipped.
And the wings are clipped. "It's sufficient size to allow adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use." So you've got a hundred-by-hundred lot, she's got a probably a forty-by-hundred-foot backyard behind the house, I think that's significantly more adequate than where I grew up. And then the proposed location is a sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers located in the backyard, she's got a vacant lot behind her and a storage area behind the bike shop. And as I, I've looked at the, I've looked at the aerials of the site from Google, and it does seem, as far as what's proposed for placement, it looks to be about as far as you can get from any other structure in the area, so I think it's, I think it's a reasonable request.
Is just being as far as you can get, is it still a reasonable buffer? Even if it's as far as she can get, is it a reasonable buffer? To protect the neighbors from whatever, whatever might, ducks might have.
A six-foot fence surrounds the whole property.
I think it's a reasonable buffer.
Yeah.
And this is...
Which will buffer all the abutters from sight of proposed living quarters.
Following that discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception.
Second.
Noting the conditions have been met, 1.1 through 1.5. It would only offer the, if it's not included in your motion, Alan, an amendment that the ducks be limited to six adult animals?
Yes.
Just for reference, Alan, each of the application packets that you have there have those criteria listed, as well as their responses to the criteria? So if you found her application packet...
Yes.
And then you would also find all the criteria and her responses to them.
Thank you.
I, I actually, never mind.
Does your motion include a limit on the number?
Six ducks.
And I only said that because you were referencing the zoning ordinance instead of the criteria, it just says one through five kind of thing.
Okay.
In the packets, it's a one-through-five thing.
Okay.
And in the zoning ordinance, it's whatever section reference you referenced.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very, thank you very much, enjoy your duck eggs. If you have any extra ones, let me know.
I grew up on duck eggs. I have a bunch of farmers in Pinkwood.
Oh, that's good.
Great, have fun. All right, any final, very patient applicants on the, at the end of, Roland, is it Paradise?
Yeah, Paradise.
Of CNS Signs applicant is seeking a variance to install an ex...
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I believe that...
I was gonna let him lead it in, and then I was, I was, if it's okay to do it now, Roland's my brother.
Okay.
And I really don't have any issue being unbiased, I don't have any skin in the game, so to speak, but...
Okay, your businesses are not affiliated in any way, or?
No.
No, we...
The businesses are affiliated, he's coming in for a sign, and she's a sign person.
Well, that's, that's the reason that I asked.
But I also heard, you know, Belair's case, and I heard, you know, the New Wave case, and signs are signs.
I know, but you're a relative.
Yep.
You know, and if something happens, and we've allowed...
It would be appropriate for you to recuse yourself in this case.
That's, that's fine. I, I mean, I didn't have any issue either way if you wanted me to, but...
It's just that if it ever gets to be a legal case or something...
So are you recusing yourself from this application?
I would be happy to.
All right. Which leads me to, that will leave us with less than a full board. Mr. Paradise, it's going to be your op, and if you want to have the case heard by a full board, we can put it over to the next regular meeting. If you're comfortable going forward with the four members who are voting, we can act on the application.
Yeah, that's good.
If that's your choice.
I'm good now with the four, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna...
You can stay seated.
Actually, actually, it's better if I scoot. Yeah, yeah.
All right, let me read the application, and then let's see if you can make our 11:00 deadline. Roland Paradise of CNS Signs applicant is seeking a variance to install an internally illuminated H&R block sign affixed to the existing commercial building facade. The variance is needed because the sign is located within 250 feet, pardon me, of a residential zone, whereas Section 6 dot 6 dot 3 of the Gulf Town zoning ordinance requires that all sections be illuminated by external white light only. The property is owned by Marshall Cohen, located 553 Mast Road and 18 lot 58B zoned commercial. Mr. Paradise?
I have a question too, on the application, has no regional impact?
Yes.
So move second. Okay, you got it right, last time.
Seconded. All in favor of no regional impact?
Aye.
All right. As unanimously, Mr. Paradise.
What they're looking to do is to take down an existing box sign that's parallel to Mast Road and put up the new individual letter sign. It's within the allowable square footage, and I think it's a better-looking sign than a box that they have there now, which has a black background, green box, and the white letters. So you see on the drawing, it's just the green box and the white letters.
Chairman, ask for it. So it's just the sign facing Mast Road that's changing?
Right, yeah.
And it's basically the same square footage as the other side?
Yeah, the square footage, the current is twenty-four and a quarter, the new one is twenty-nine point three, and allowable is thirty-one point two.
Okay. It's just spread out more.
Yeah.
Guess longer.
Yeah.
And once again, the only reason you're here being the proximity of the residential zone and the external illumination.
Right, where they change the whole sign, they have to apply for the variance.
So is the green square illuminated, or just the lettering?
The green square is illuminated and the letter is illuminated white.
Okay, so at nighttime, any hours of operation on the sign?
I'm not sure how long they keep the signs lit at that plaza.
Is the green sign lit now?
Is the lit green?
The existing sign, is it lit?
Yeah, it's a box sign.
It is lit?
It's illuminated, yeah.
So they have, just have the same hour, whatever, whatever...
The issue, the issue and the reason why it's here is because it's considered a non-conforming sign, and even though it's lit now, once you remove that nonconformity, you can't replace it without getting variance.
It's in the plaza, right?
It is.
Yeah.
And it hap, it happens to be one of the few businesses in the plaza that are close enough to a residential zone that that 250-foot rule applies. They're within 250 foot of a residential zone, and that's...
Is that what Moose Club Road that goes down?
Moose Club Park or something?
It's across Moose Club Park, exactly. Now, in this instance, you know, obviously, there's a little jut out on the building, and you probably can't even see that sign from any of those residences there because of that jut out on the building. So, you know, impacts to the residential district are probably minimal.
Is this an H&R block office? Is this a year-round office, or is that sign only primarily used during the tax season from January to April?
I'm not sure about that.
Whether, whether it would be something that would be used 12 months a year or not?
I think it's open 12 months a year.
I see somebody in the back there shaking his head that it's a year-round.
It is a year.
And your name, sir?
I'm Darrell Royter.
Could you spell it?
D-A-R-R-E-L-L. Royter, R-O-Y-T-E-R.
Okay.
Five Moose Club Park Road. And I have no problem with the sign, I was just making sure that there wasn't some big LED thing, you know, sounds funny.
We do have businesses on the other side, Moose Club Park Road, there's a...
Other plaza.
Well, no, there's other plaza across the street, but even the residential stuff on the continuing west on Mast Road is commercial with signs. There's a daycare on the corner, there's a, there's a, a little daycare on the other side of the street, they have signage out there, too. No, but I mean, in fact, it's, it's business-oriented, even though it's own residential.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, yeah.
So I think, I don't know whether that doesn't apply.
It's the internal illumination of the sign, the reason why they're here, nothing else.
I understand that. I've, I've learned the 250-foot rule, Brian, because I got 244 feet on one side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm all set.
All right, anything else, anything else from board members?
Almost eleven, we've got three more minutes.
That's okay. You won't turn into a pumpkin.
Oh, I might.
Make a motion to grant the variance in the case... Alan, we haven't closed the public hearing.
You haven't opened the public hearing yet. You haven't opened the hearing to the public?
This is, this is true.
Okay, excuse me.
It's late, it's a long day.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anyone have anything else from Mr. Paradise? Thank you, sir, we'll, okay. Here, Mr. Royter, do you wish to be heard on the, this application?
The application sounds fine to me. The application sounds fine to me.
All right, thank you very much, seeing no other comments, let's close the public hearing and deliberate. Alan? How about any discussion before I jump into the fray here?
I make a motion to grant the variance, and that it meets the five conditions.
Any further discussion? I will only offer that I think it looks like a very reasonable upgrade of the existing sign, and if it meets the square footage and other criteria, I have no problem with it. Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, seeing none, pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Was this zoning amendment thing left out of here for us this evening?
Yeah. Are we supposed to discuss it, or just, just for our own...
It's for your information, basically, those are the amendments that are proposed and have been sent out in the public notice for the first public hearing. The first public hearing will be next Thursday, not this coming one, but the one after, the twelfth of December, and we'll be hearing how the planning board feels about each of those. If any of you as zoning board members who deal with the zoning ordinance on a daily basis or on a monthly basis, I guess, would like to provide comments to me, I'd be happy, or if you want to show up at the public hearing and say something. You can give me a comment.
I'm saying, can I give you a...
All right, seeing no other correspondence.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, anyone? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.